Good evening and welcome to our March 25th Town Council meeting. This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. A notice of this meeting was mailed to the Star Ledger and the West Orange Chronicle on November 23rd, 2013. A notice of this meeting was also posted on the bulletin board in the Municipal Building, West Orange, and filed in the office of the Municipal Clerk of the Township of West Orange on November 23rd, 2013. Councilman Cirillo?
Present.
Councilman Garino?
Present.
Councilman Kropovia?
Present.
Councilwoman Spango?
Present.
And Council President McCartney?
Present.
Thank you. You're welcome. Our conference agenda was initially, on our conference agenda initially, we had a tax presentation from the mayor. It's been requested to postpone that until April 8th, when the budget, the township budget will actually be introduced. So it will go in nicely, we'll still hear it, but it will be postponed until April 8th. In the meantime, I think I have found my male counterpart in terms of being actively involved in the community. Many of you know, as besides the Town Council, Planning Board, liaison to the Environmental Commission, the Arts Council here, Vice President of the Chamber of Commerce, I just found out recently that John McElroy has been operating a business in town for 30 years, established in 1984. So I would like to welcome you because I have found out how involved you are in the community as well. So, tell me, do you want to?
I don't want to.
Okay. We're gonna duke it out, John.
Well, I'm not sure what it is that you were gonna say, John. I've learned a lot about Select Auto Repair. Over the past couple of weeks, I've been doing some research into all things John McElroy. John started the business with his wife Renee, 30 years ago, on St. Patrick's Day. One of the things that has always oppressed me about John is his loyalty to his customers and to his employees. His current manager's been there for seven years. He has an employee that's worked with him for 25 years, and one that's been there for 30 years, the entire, you know, time that he's been with Select. I think that one of the things that people don't know about John's auto repair shop is that you get a loaner car if you go in even for an oil change. So, and that's just, you know, not people that know him, anybody that comes in needs a car to, you know, drop off their car, they get it to go. I think that John's employees who would, you know, are sorry that they can't be here tonight because they're all, they worked all day and then they went to do their, take care of their families, they are so committed to supporting your vision of Select Auto Repair. I think that when you walk through the doors of the lobby, you're welcome, there's a video, there's hold music when you, when you're, if you call in, you're on hold. I think that the customer service that you get is beyond anything else that you would get in any other repair shop. Another thing that happens after you get your car serviced, you get a phone call a few days later that says, "Hi, we just serviced your car, how was your service? Are there any questions you have?" You get like a follow-up phone call. So, outside of John being a great mechanic and a business owner, he's also a really good friend. I think that we've known each other from the chamber, and there's, you know, Rick is here, and Susan, and everybody that's worked with John downtown sees that he's all-in. He doesn't commit to things that he's not gonna take every single bit of himself and put it towards whatever, whatever cause. We at the Downtown Alliance are very lucky to have volunteer that is chair, how long have you been chairman? A long time, I've been on the board for longer than that.
Gets blurry.
You know, we're very lucky to have a guy who's all-in, all the time. So, I know John has some things he wants to say, and I think it's a great idea to give John, you know, this accolade tonight.
Thank you, Megan. And I think the testament is also the fact that you have so many of the Downtown Alliance board members here to appreciate this as well.
Well, like Megan said, you know, I always give accolades to my help, my staff over the years. I actually have two guys that I recently honored for 25 years, and one for 30, and many more that, you know, eight, nine years. And I always give them credit because I cannot do this without a good staff.
Good business sense, right?
People that run a business know, you have to have good people. So, I was lucky in that, I was lucky in the fact that, you know, I had a very, very strong partner. When we started this, she's no longer with us, we honored her tremendously at the 30th though, she was very, she was very much on our minds on the anniversary, and we honored her. But it's not me, you know, it's nature of this business. People break down their cars, they need to be towed, they're on the side of the highway, their car is broke, they're frustrated, you know, the second biggest thing that somebody owns is, you know, aside from their house is their vehicle. And when they lose the use of that vehicle, they're frustrated. So, over the years, we've learned to calm them down and find ways to make them comfortable and get them through the experience and have them smile at the end. So, it's not, you know, it's, it's not driving an ambulance, but it's very close. And that's what we've learned to do over the years, is to help people when they're in a pinch. And I think that's where my volunteer efforts come from, because it's just the nature of what we do and how we work. And I appreciate the accolades. Thank you.
This is a citation on behalf of the West Orange Town Council. Select towing was started in 1984 by John and Renee McElroy as a towing company with no garage or facility and one truck. The business grew and after occupying a small shop on Watson Avenue, the company then moved to 32 Ashland Avenue. The company started doing customer repairs and eventually built a modern, state-of-the-art facility at 52 Washington Street in 2001, and is still the only New Jersey certified green repair shop, thank you, in Essex County. Select towing has a stellar reputation with a dedicated staff and many long-term employees. John's involvement in the community participation includes first aid squad member as EMT, zoning board member, and currently serves as the Chair of the Downtown West Orange Alliance, and the West Orange Chamber of Commerce. The co-founder of the company, Renee McElroy, is no longer with us and is dearly missed, but John McElroy continues to carry on the business with dedication and excellent service to his customers. Again, testament to all the Downtown Alliance people that are here, to your friendship and...
(laughter) I'd like to make a comment, Mr. McElroy. First of all, John, thank you. Thank you for what you do for the community, and thank you for what you do for the Downtown Alliance and all the time you give and all the direction and mentoring you give. So you're an asset to us. But I do like, I do wanna let the community of West Orange know that Mr. McElroy runs a very green facility. Mr. McElroy has a totally solar facility that produces very little carbons, and we thank you for doing that for our community and having your business here, and it shows you really care, John. Thank you. Thank you for what you do for us.
That's a nice segue for Mike Brick. If you would like to make an announcement, we just came from the Edison Museum for launching Earth Hour.
I'm in costume, too.
You're in costume, too, right? 60 minutes, 60 minutes.
Esteemed council members and employees of the town, and, no, I'm sorry, I'm old. And fellow citizens of West Orange, we have a fourth annual Earth Hour event at the Edison Museum. They're wonderful and they host us, and it's a great venue. We had a good range of speakers, we did videotaping, and hopefully we'll get it onto the cable station so that it can be spread to our townspeople and get it up to the high schools so they can watch it, so that they can be empowered to observe Earth Hour for that hour, but in that hour discuss how they could be meaningful to the planet. It's amazing how much can be done. And Susan had a memorable quote, and she talked about ordinary people doing extraordinary work. Well, when we band together and we do more than the Lone Ranger out there, we can be very, very successful. The Downtown Alliance, allied with the Environmental Commission, would love to do a green waterpark, a sunken garden, a vertical garden, rooftops that are green for restaurants, murals that kind of honor the environmental theme in many different ways. Washington School, we saw an amazing garden that they planned, they showed us that, and the students there. So, it's a great event, and by putting it on video, people really can watch it. It's hard to get people to come out to these events. We had, the speakers were great. Joe D. couldn't come, but he sent his representative, and she spoke about all the amazing things that the environmental station in Roseland is doing. And I recommend to everybody in town, go up there because they have a miniature home inside that's all green. And you get amazing ideas as you walk through it, the roof, the insulation, the plumbing, the heating system, it's a small model that you walk through, and it's, they've done an exemplary job with it. So, I'm just glad we had the Earth Hour event. I usually don't dress like this. The new mascot for Earth Hour is Spider-Man, so you might see me next year in a Spider-Man suit, but I don't know.
But it really is a simple act. All we're asking everyone to do is on Saturday, March 29th, to turn, switch your lights off for one hour. We talk about ordinary people, but it's not just us, this is, millions of people are mobilized around the world. So I do encourage you to go to earthhour.org, see the satellite pictures of what Earth actually looks like, say from 8:29 at 8:30 when all the lights go out around the world.
And we have the opportunity in town to go up to Eagle Rock or any of the higher points in town and watch the lights go out all over Manhattan, and they really do go out. You'll see from the Empire State Building to the Freedom Tower to very large skyscrapers, I would say two-thirds of the lights in the city go out at 8:30, and it's really cool to see. So try to get your kids up there, go there yourself, and then go home and turn on the candles and talk about what you can do for Earth Hour, for the Earth. Thank you.
Thank you. I think, I don't know where Jessica, oh, there she is.
She is.
On our agenda, Jessica, if you would like to give us an update?
Good evening, Council. Hi. I have a couple of updates and a couple of things to talk about. First of all, on April 1st, our SOR bills are due. They can be brought to the Tax Collector's Office in Town Hall, or they can be mailed to Town Hall at 66 Main Street. There is a 10-day grace period. On April 6th is, we're having West Orange Shredding Day. It's from 1 a.m., oh, no, 1:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m. And you can bring your documents or your general items, your receipts and expenditures to the Environmental Center at 590 Mount Pleasant Avenue. It is free for all town residents, ID is required, and there is a four-box limit. On April 27th, from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m., the West Orange Public Relations Commission is coordinating a West Orange cleanup to help clean some of the areas of our town. The plan is for all of our volunteers to meet at Town Hall, where they'll receive supplies like gloves, trash bags, and water, and then they'll be assigned to a specific location along Main Street in the Valley Neighborhood or Pleasant Valley Way. Information and sign-up opportunities will be available on our website at www.westorange.org, or on our other social media profiles, including our Facebook page at facebook.com/westorangeinfo. If you haven't already seen the West Orange High School video to the popular song "Happy" by Pharrell Williams, you have to check it out. It was even featured on News 12, so it was big, made the big time. It was made by students, teachers, and faculty during our 2014 Spirit Week at West Orange High School. So you can find it on our YouTube channel at Twitter, oh, I'm sorry, on our YouTube channel at youtube.com/westorangeinfo. We also wanna congratulate the West Orange High School Winter Color Guard. They are ranked number one in the nation, and they're going to the WGI Sport of the Arts World Championships in Dayton, Ohio during the first week of April. So, we wanna congratulate them, they're making us proud. And also, congratulations to the West Orange Fire Department. They played in the NJ Snow Bowl event that was sponsored by the New York Giants this past week, and the event raised money for Special Olympics of New Jersey. They raised $2,900 and went 2 to 1, so congratulations. And finally, the West Orange Scholarship Fund is seeking donations to help West Orange High School students fund their college education. Since 1925, the fund has awarded almost $1 million in scholarships to more than 1,400 students. So it's really an indication of the strength and community spirit and one aspect of West Orange life. Donations can be mailed to the West Orange Scholarship Fund, care of Jim Quinn, 290 A-R-A-N-E-O, Oranio Drive, I think that's Oranio, West Orange. And if you have questions, you can contact Jim Quinn at 973-731-3732. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Was gonna say a question, right?
Jess, I think we have a question.
Hi, Jess, can I ask you a question, please, about the cleanup? Was the Downtown Alliance involved in the decision-making or how it's being put together? Since it's...
The West Orange Public Relations Commission is spearheading this, and we're working with the, we will be working with the Downtown West Orange Alliance, obviously, because it's going to be along Main Street. So we are in the process of coordinating all of these groups together.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
This is not gonna come in. Bill Cuffin, West Orange Arts Council Chair.
Do I have to say my address or something?
No. You can introduce yourself as the West Orange Arts...
West Orange Arts Council Chairman, I guess. That simply means that all the work rises to the top.
Right.
Anyway, we had an opening last night with George Copse's famous photographs of musicians, including Pete Seeger.
Speaking to the mic.
Pete Seeger and a lot of other big names, and I have, so I have scar to you for that. And I also, it was well-attended. I think it was one of the best-attended events we've had. It must have been 20, 30 people there at least. And many of the people there were friends of George, and there were some famous musicians themselves from West Orange in the crowd. So it was a good event. Let's see. Oh, there's a poetry reading this Sunday in the library by West Orange poets, and it's, it's at 2 o'clock. And some of the, excuse me, some of the people that will be reading are people that have meet every, I think it's second Saturday a month in the library to write poetry and to recite it. April also is Poetry Month, and we've made arrangements with the library to turn the media room, the computer room, into a poetry room. And Peggy, Peggy Vasallo has these poems from West Orange poets that she, that were used in a previous time, and we're gonna put them all over the room and invite people to write some poems, too. So, and we're still working on that. And we're also trying to reactivate our mosaic project for the library, the library wall from the parking lot into, and we're working with some people who know how to do that.
That's always helpful. That's always helpful, to work with people that know how to do it.
It is, since, since none of us know how to do it. So anyway, I'll leave this with you, and if you have any questions, I think, you can just pass it over.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I do encourage everyone to attend the George Copse Photography Exhibit. It is at the West Orange Public Library, it runs through April. The name of the exhibit is cleverly called "Down in Front." I don't think, knowing George, I know that was not George yelling that out, but there are some up-front photos of very famous musicians there to be seen, "Down in Front." Check it out. Any other liaison?
I have no announcements, no meetings.
Poetry. Councilman Cirillo, any liaison announcements?
Yeah, I just wanna let the seniors know, the Deglin House, we continue to work on the elevators, just to be a little patient with the staff. Debbie Salnordi's doing all she can to make sure that, you know, everyone is taken care of. We shut down some of the elevators, the others are operating at the other end of the hallway. So, you know, just bear with us. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you.
And I'll go with you, John. Okay.
Thank you, Council President. I don't have any direct liaison announcements. I just wanted to follow up on something I've been talking about the last few council meetings about my attempt to get some information about how exactly we're spending our money in our self-insured plan. And I got an email from the Chief Financial Officer today that had a revised memo from Fairview Insurance that was dated today, and it followed up on a, I guess, a memo they sent in January. I've been asking for this information since early December. And it does provide a little bit more information about who exactly is getting our money, but there still seems to be a lot of questions in my mind about what's going on. I sent a follow-up email to you, Mr. Gross, after I got your email. I don't know if now's an appropriate time to talk about it because you didn't respond, maybe you haven't seen it.
Yeah, I don't know.
But, okay.
I'm not prepared to.
Okay. Then we'll, we'll try to talk about it at the next, next council meeting. But one of the things I did wanna just let you know that I think you thought you were sending me something about the joint insurance fund program that we're part of for our liability insurance, and what I got, I think, is a COA spreadsheet. So maybe if you could resend me that material, I would appreciate it. Thank you, that's all.
Okay, thank you. On the Planning Board, our next meeting is next Wednesday, April 2nd already. There will, there is an application for additional antenna on two, for two cell towers that are there. Interestingly enough, I have been speaking to assessors about a way to generate more revenue because more equipment, we are in a prime location, and it would be a way for assessors to review the way cell towers are assessed. So, yes, I look forward to hearing from them. Councilman Garino?
Thank you, Council President. I just want everybody to know for a public service announcement that coming on June 7th will be our big township picnic, Edison Day, and New Jersey 350. So keep that on your calendar, it's gonna be a great event. You go on the website, I'm sure Downtown Alliance has a lot of information because they're doing a lot of work on it, and the folks at the National Park Service. Also in June, we have another big event coming, it's the Relay for Life to be held at the West Orange High School. It's gonna be on June 13th and 14th. So we look forward to everybody to go on the website, Relay for Life, sign up a team, make a donation, and it's a worthwhile event, and it's gonna be a real success. And also, too, it's coming up is Gregory School's 100th Anniversary, and they have a paper program, and if you go on their website, www.gregoryschoolsentennial.com, you will find the application if you care to donate to buy a brick paper for the new Centennial Park. And it's really good, it's gonna be an interesting park setup and a legacy for the school. So for any persons, people, residents who went to Gregory, has kids that went to Gregory, it's something worthwhile to get involved in. So we're looking forward to that. Thank you, Council President.
You're welcome. Speaking of New Jersey 350, that reminded me that I also serve on the Friends of Edison, which is the fundraising arm for the National Historic Park. So I would invite everyone to save the date of May 4th for a 1 o'clock cocktail reception and entertainment. And the entertainment is provided by Jim Keefe, West Orange resident, playing the baby grand piano in the lobby at the Luna Stage, and at 3 o'clock, your ticket price will include a Luna Stage matinee performance. Save the date, please, May 4th at Luna Stage. Well, proceeds from that event will go to specific items that the museum is trying to preserve. So, it might be an oil painting, might be phonograph equipment, or belt shafts in the library, but you can specify where you would like your funds to, what you would like your funds to preserve. Thank you. That's okay. We're ready, we're ready for our meeting. I apologize. Not at all. Thank you. This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. A notice of this meeting was mailed to the Star Ledger and the West Orange Chronicle on November 23rd, 2013. A notice of this meeting was also posted on the bulletin board in the Municipal Building, West Orange, and filed in the office of the Municipal Clerk of the Township of West Orange on November 23rd, 2013. Councilman Cirillo?
Present.
Councilman Garino?
Present.
Councilman Kropovia?
Present.
Councilwoman Spango?
Present.
And Council President McCartney?
Present.
Mayor Parisi is also in attendance. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
The council is now in their public meeting. First on our agenda is public comment. If anyone has a comment, please comment or question. Yes, sir. Please come to the microphone, tell us your name and address.
My name is Lawrence Sapphire. I live on, at 1 Merrywood Drive, and I'm here to kind of throw a curveball at the council. A year or two ago, I attended a meeting at the Edison School concerning the downtown project, and, well, I have nothing to say about that. During that meeting, the question of taxation of schoolchildren came up, and it was said that if there are any schoolchildren in the apartments that were scheduled to be built, that the developer, I guess with his tax abatements, would pay the school district a sum of money for each child who happened to reside there. And I had been thinking of another element in town, and that's the curveball, end of this statement I wanna make to you. I counted up, I happen to live next to a house on Merrywood, which is the only reason that this has occurred to me, that's owned by the African Church in Newark, and it's one of 13 houses in town that are considered clerical residences, and therefore they are exempt from all taxes, school taxes, town taxes, and county taxes. And I know for a fact that there are schoolchildren who come out of these tax-exempt houses. And I discussed this with the tax assessor, who told me that many years ago, he had run against such tax exemptions in the town of Orange and lost very badly. So when I say it's a curveball, that's more or less, I'm sure, the way you'll see it and I see it. However, I did some research, and I'll get to the point in a moment, on the constitutionality of these tax exemptions. And I found that while the Supreme Court ruled once that ministers who are in tax-exempt houses are exempt from paying an income tax based... houses are exempt from paying an income tax based on what would be considered their stipend for living rent-free, that was the extent of the law concerning these exemptions. Now, the state of New Jersey in 1941 enacted several codicils to the state law, more or less, but in a very vague way, giving every clerical institution the right to two residences that are tax-free. Didn't clarify whether those residents were on church property, which was, in the past, was normally the case. And of course, we have a monastery in this town, which has a number of residences, but I don't believe there are any schoolchildren coming out of that. So this is the curveball that I wanted to throw at the council. I think that the town should take it upon itself to at least investigate whether taxes should be paid by the churches who own these houses for any children who go to the school district, because it's supporting the establishment of religion to allow children from these tax-exempt houses to go to the school district, go to the school district without any compensation to the school district as the rest of us do. So again, this curveball may be something you may not want to deal with, but I would strongly urge you to think about it, because it amounts probably to a few hundred thousand dollars that the rest of us are paying for church residences that are not on church property. Okay, the other thing I wanted to mention was our recycling situation, specifically as it regards computers and electrical equipment. Now, when the town started this, living on Merrywood Drive, which at the time was considered a private road, and so we had to take care of our own garbage and recycling. So I got into the habit of taking the bottles and stuff up once or twice a week to the recycling. And when they opened the computer electronics part, I naturally had some stuff to throw away, and I looked in, and occasionally I and other people would find interesting things in there, like you could use for a spare part, or I have a big LP collection. Being an old guy, I still keep on doing that. And so occasionally I would see a good turntable in there that someone had thrown away, I would say, "Well, why not make use of it?" And I always looked at that, and in other towns that I've lived that had had, in the old days, a town dump, when you came to throw things away, you could find things, it was kind of like an exchange. And in the last year, when a new set of people have started running the recycling, they have made it clear to me in a very aggressive fashion that this was like stealing, if you took something out of that, no matter how unimportant, that was like stealing from the town. So I would like to clarify someday what is exactly the town's position on residents taking things that might be interesting out of there. Like, for instance, we can take topsoil, but again, I'd just like to bring that to the town's attention. I spoke to the guy who's in charge of it, I don't know his name, and he said something like, "There's gold in those computers," which maybe there is, but I have a bunch of computers, and I don't look at them as gold mines. Anyway, thank you for listening to all of this.
Thank you, Mr. Sapphire, very much, thank you. Any other comments?
Good evening, I'm Mark Meyer, it's at 19 Howell Drive. Regarding the town pool, I'd like to make a suggestion that why don't we bring in entertainment? If you want to liven it up and make it more attractive to people, there's that whole big patio in front of the food stand where you could put face painters, or, you know, guitar players, or whatever. There's plenty of room there, and I'm sure people would like it, and I'm sure there would be local people, or guys, or people in high school who would like a place to show their talent. And I'm sure there would be a lot of people who would like to hear music or whatever else that could come out of the township, and even possibly pay for professional entertainment from time to time. I think it would add a lot to the atmosphere of the pool, and it wouldn't be too expensive. Also, I noticed here that you're looking to do the pool for $227,000, $228,000. I thought last year, when this initially came up, was about $150,000, so it has gone up considerably. Now, second issue. On Sunday, I decided, after spending four or five hours of cleaning the basement, that I needed to get out a little bit, so I decided to drive down to my favorite part of town, which is the redevelopment site. And I noticed that on the roof, there were multiple antennas on top of the old Edison building. So I have about eight or nine questions for you that if you can't answer tonight, maybe we can get an answer another time. But there were, it's like, there must be 10 antennas on the top of the Prism building, the Edison building. Were permits issued for these? And do you know, does the township know about them? Was the electric service inspected? How did they get the power into the building? I thought the building was, you know, shut down and sort of gutted. So how is the power going into the building? And do all those antennas and things meet the wind and ice load requirements? So, you know, that's important. Do these antennas and satellite dishes or whatever's on there meet the local ordinances? I hope they do. An important question is, with an antenna on the roof, does this now make, turn the property from a residential property into a commercial property? I mean, that's an important issue, especially if you're not too excited about the prospect of that property being residential. Has it now altered the building? Is Prism paying taxes on this usage? Are they being taxed on just an empty building as before, or now that the building has more value and they're generating income from it, you know, the taxes should be adjusted? And they should be taxed accordingly. And my last question is, is Prism paid up in their taxes? I know as of two weeks ago, they were in arrears quite substantially, so I'd like to know if they've paid up on their taxes. And, you know, there was something else I noticed in your article in the Chronicle, Mr. Mayor, you had said that the town sets aside money to cover taxes that aren't paid and tax appeals lost. And I know a lot of the businesses downtown, like Prism, or some of the businesses downtown and Prism, don't pay their taxes, and we kind of like, some of the council people poo-poo that and say, "Well, they're only going to pay a fine anyway, and they're going to pay interest, so it's really not hurting us." But in fact, in your comments, you said late tax payments are hurting the town, and you have to adjust the system for it. And it means that the rest of the taxpayers are carrying Prism until they pay their taxes. So I would like to know if you are planning more aggressive tactics, like you are entitled to do in the redevelopment agreement, to go after them? And change things, you know, because I don't think it's fair for the taxpayers to carry Prism development.
Your time is over. Thank you, Mark.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment?
Good evening. Claire Silvestri, 20 Grandview Avenue. A few meetings ago, I came up and asked the council to reconsider applying all of the $150,000 for the County Open Space Trust Fund grant to the splash pad. And at the time, I assumed that after hearing the discussion last year, that the $150,000 was going to replace the capital funding that the town had set aside for the splash pad. But now, after looking at Resolution 6314, I realized that it wasn't meant to replace it, it's meant to add to it. So I'd really recommend the council not vote on this resolution until they receive a full explanation of why there's about a, roughly 100% increase in the budget for the splash pad. And I'd also ask that the council pull Resolution 6314, and as in previous meetings, at the time the resolution is considered by the council, I'd hope that either Mr. Lepore and/or Mr. Keough will make a presentation. And after that time, I'd request to be able to come up and have three minutes of public comment. I have seen some of the plans, I have questions, but I would expect, I would hope that some of their presentation would answer some of my questions. So I'd ask to be able to hold and have the three minutes of public comment to ask questions and make further comments at that time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Sue Freeval, 10 Ridgefield Avenue. I'm here to kind of follow up on the whole pool thing. After the last meeting, both Mr. Grino and Mr. Cirillo said that they would help pursue the idea of daily passes, that they voted in favor of the pool schedule as it was last time, but they still wanted to look into amending it. And I did try and pursue that by email and never heard back from either of you gentlemen. But according to the Essex News Daily, to quote Mr. Grino, he said, "If you want more people at the pool, it's going to cost you more money to run that pool, more lifeguards, more use of chemicals, more wear and tear." So the concern there is about daily passes leading to overcrowding. If the concern is an increase in attendance and overcrowding, then I would expect by that same logic that tonight you vote against the splash pad, because the whole point of the splash pad is in fact to increase attendance. So Mr. Keough made it very clear in January of 2013, the whole point of the splash pad is to increase attendance and to give the pool a shot in the arm. Similarly, Mr. Cirillo talked about expenses that need to be thought about if we were to embrace some sort of daily pass. Those expenses also need to be thought about if you're going to put in a splash pad. On top of that, given the figures cited by, I think it was Mr. Gross, in January of 2013, the splash pad would have to bring in about $12,000 a year over its lifespan in order to pay for itself. With the new price of more than double, you're talking about having to bring in an extra $25,000 in revenue a year for 15 years in order to pay for itself, and that's not even adding to the revenue of the pool yet. So is there any evidence that shows that this is going to bring in the equivalent of about 100 more family memberships every summer? And in the hopes that there'll be more information presented, I'd also like to ask that you pull that resolution and that I have the chance to comment it at that time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Anthony Puglisi, representing County Executive Joe DiFincenzo. I know the calendar says it's springtime, although the weather may not be cooperating. But we want to kind of push spring a little bit, that's what our Parks Director says. So I just want to let you know about the Cherry Blossom Festival. It runs from April 5th to April 13th in Branchford Park. There's the Bloom Fest, there's a children's fun run, 5K run, and a whole morning full of bike races. All that information is on our county website, which is essexcountyNJ.org. We do invite the public to come out and celebrate spring with us, and hopefully by April 5th, we'll have temperatures that are a little warmer, and cherry blossoms that are pink and white instead of the way they look now. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll close the public portion of that meeting and offer comments. I want to start with a thank you to Mr. Sapphire. Thank you for coming to the council meeting. There's a lot of thank yous here. Just thank you for thinking, thank you for making that analogy with the downtown redevelopment project. I will certainly look into, follow up on the conversations that you've had with the tax assessor, find out exactly what that does mean of being tax-exempt, and what that applies, who that applies to, not just what it applies to. We know it as being an inherently beneficial property, but it's the first I'm hearing about the residents themselves also. So, very interesting comments. I made a note here too, that you might appreciate this "Down in Front" because of all the LPs that you said you had, there are quite a few of these musicians there, and you might find some music that you, photos of the musicians that you have. You mentioned about going into the recycling center to find items. A few years back, the environmental, well, as the Energy Commission, now we are reestablished as an environmental commission, we had a swap meet, and people actually brought things in to do exactly what you said, just, it was free, you come in and take and swap. We haven't done that in a few years, but it is something to look at. I know our Department of Public Works Director is here, he could answer those questions better. Our recycling coordinator, I don't see here this evening, but just to answer those questions about what is considered gold. I don't know, I don't think of it as gold, but I do think of it as tonnage, and the more of that tonnage we can get out of our hauling fees, it is gold to us, it saves us taxpayer dollars. So I see it as gold, but in a different sense than used parts. But it's very resourceful, and I invite you to join the Environmental Commission, we have a meeting on Thursday, right here in Town Hall at 7 o'clock, just to share those type of ideas. Very resourceful. Thank you. Mark, we have the Director and Assistant Director of the Recreation Department about entertainment. I can imagine that they have had quite a bit of entertainment there, it is a good idea. The cell towers, you raised a lot of interesting comments about the cell towers. They've been there for a number of years, but we can check with the zoning office, maybe Patty has more to add, how their applications came about, but they have been there for a number of years, and hopefully they do meet all the zoning requirements for them to be there. Claire and Sue, we can talk about the Resolution S when the time comes up. My understanding is that there is a county grant that goes along with this splash park? Yes?
Yes.
Respond?
Yes.
Okay, yes, okay. Thank you. So that will offset some of the cost of this. Any other comments? Let me just go back to Mr. Sapphire. With the tax exemption and the redevelopment project, the way it's presented, and it is a tax abatement, but they have a payment in lieu of taxes, that comes, 95% of that comes back to the township. So out of that money, that's where the town would pay for everything. All of those factors that you mentioned have been factored into that pilot payment. So it's not an abatement, per se, the way our tax bill is divided up between the county and the schools and the town, the municipal budget, 95% of that payment in lieu of taxes comes back to the municipality, 5% goes to the county. So that's all factored in there.
Just as a sideline on that, I can't remember any specifics of payments in lieu of taxes around the Northeast, but I have come across that situation where there are, for one reason, tax exemptions in institutions, we have to pay, deal with the political structure to pay money in lieu of taxes.
Right, that's how this is structured. Thank you. Any other comments? Councilwoman Krikovia?
Thank you. I also want to say thank you for bringing up these two issues. I don't know the answers to either one of them, but I would like, if it's possible, for the administration to research this and perhaps present... for the administration to research this and perhaps present an answer at the next council meeting, if that's possible, on both of these issues about recycling and also the tax-exempt status that was discussed. Mr. Meyerowitz, I don't know the answer to any of your questions, but I did do a quick search on our tax rolls, and PRISM is delinquent on their February taxes on their two largest properties, it's about a quarter of a million dollars, and as of next week, that amount due will double to a half a million dollars. I'm not going to rehash this, I think we should hold the PRISM to the redevelopment agreement, the 2006 redevelopment agreement, that requires that they remain current on their property taxes, and if they don't, then it's a potential event of default, and we should send them a letter and give them 30 days to pay their taxes. And we've done that, we did that once before, and they did pay their taxes. So I don't see any reason why we shouldn't continue to hold them to the contract. We'll be talking more about the pool later on. Thank you again for, the two people got up and made comments, and thank you, Mr. Puglisi.
You know, I'm sorry, Anthony, but you know, there is that whole recycling thing. I just saw the county has the electronics recycling dates coming up. What is, yeah, if you have those dates available, let people know. Sorry, Tara Casella was just at the Edison Museum, and she had flyers there. I didn't bring one with me.
Yes, every spring and fall, the county has two recycling days, the Household Hazers Waste Collection Day, which is Saturday, May 3rd, and then on May 17th is Computer and Electronics Recycling. Those are all-day events, and they are located at, we have a new location, which is 125 Grove Street, which is the old Hospital Center site in Cedar Grove.
Anthony, now you heard the comments from Mr. Sapphire, is there anything where someone could go through old parts of things that have been recycled? Do you know of any?
I would have to research that.
Yeah.
I can get back to you.
Great. Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Greenoff?
Thank you, Council President. I've heard tonight about wanting to take the grant that the county gave to the township and move it to use something else, but by, well, you can't. A grant was written for a particular project, and that's where the money has to be used. You cannot decide to use it for something else than you put in your grant request. So that's besides, that's an issue in itself, and we'll talk about that with the pool. Mr. Meyerowitz, I don't know anybody poo-pooing the fact that PRISM's not paying their taxes. Not saying just because, and they're paying the penalties, the fact of the matter is, yes, I don't agree with it, I don't like it, but the fact of the matter is, is that eventually they're going to pay, and they're going to pay heavy. So the township is making money, making more money, and it's not poo-pooing it, it's something I'm very upset about, but at the end of the day, the township of West Orange makes more money. All right. But have you ever came here about any other commercial site that's delinquent in their taxes? You go to the tax rolls, there's a lot of people, but you just keep pounding PRISM. And at the end of the day, you say, "Put them in default." Okay? So you put them in default, what happens? I need an answer. What happens if you put them in default? No, no, you can't, you can't talk right now. Why would you put them in default? No. You put, you put them in default, I'm just asking in general, not asking opinion. Sorry, Council President. But it's their property, at the end of the day. Council President, okay. But I don't agree with people being late in their taxes, I don't. But we need to work with them, and eventually, things will straighten out. I'm not happy about it, I'm not. I don't, it's not poo-pooing. I'm just saying, at the end of the day, the township's making money. Is it right to go this way? No. It's not, but it's happening. So, Mr. Sapphire, thank you. You know, I like going up there looking for things, you'd be surprised, you could find a turntable, an old Edison, believe me, people have found Edison memorabilia in the recycling center. So, but it's good, and what you brought to our attention about residences and tax liability, and I'm sure, as Council President McCartney said, our administration will look into those issues. And thank you, Council President.
You're welcome. Councilwoman Cirillo?
Yes, Council President. Mr. Sapphire, thank you again for coming forward and attending tonight's meeting. On the issue of property taxes, that's very enlightening, as it relates to how the nonprofit status extends to additional properties that may be owned by places of worship. It's a state issue, really, so we're guided by what the state law says as it relates to taxation, but at the local level, what we can do is, I guess, from a zoning perspective, try to keep that in mind, should, you know, there be a request to build these, you know, these kind of institutions or facilities, we have to keep that in mind, whether, we have to weigh that against the impact on the local property taxpayer. But, but yeah, it's a state issue that we're guided by.
He's never been here before. Sir, it's very, it's difficult for, you know, that, it's, that's just not the protocol. You know, that you had a chance to speak, and now we're just going to respond to the comments. We can always follow up.
I can talk to you about it later. No, I would love to talk to Mr. Sapphire after this conversation, after I finish my remarks. And Council President, on the issue of recycling, especially now with these profit-sharing agreements and contractual obligations, where the company keeps a percentage, the town keeps a percentage, we have to think about, you know, how do we define, you know, that issue, whether or not someone can go in there and pick, pick up a turntable, or pick up a piece of memorabilia. Contractually, it's really the, it is the property of the town, because they're under contract to share the profit of whatever is picked up on the recycling end. So it's something that we need to look at and clearly define within that contract, so that we don't get in trouble when we go in there looking for, you know, anything that we may be interested in. Mr. Meyerowitz, we talked about the property taxes, and we learned that, you know, they're still deficient. Hopefully, they can meet the deadline, and they don't have to pay that additional penalty. But on the antennas, on the issue of the antennas, I believe that there's a permit that's issued, should a corporation or a private entity be interested, because it's really a, it's an improvement. Now, I may be wrong, and I'm going to confirm that, but I would think it's an improvement to the property, not whether or not it equates into additional property taxes right now. I wouldn't think so until there's a revaluation of. Now, if the property is redeveloped, if the property's redeveloped, it would be part of the aggregate revenue, which we would take a percentage under that abatement agreement. That's my understanding. Now, I can confirm what I think, but that's to the best of my ability, that's what I can tell you today to answer your question. And on the pool issues, we'll talk about that later. Thank you, Council President.
You're welcome. Councilwoman?
Did Councilwoman Cartagia want to go?
No, please go ahead, I just wanted to follow up.
Thank you, Council President. Again, as my colleague stated, Mr. Sapphire, thank you for bringing to our attention about the taxes paid from worship houses, and I would love to talk to the tax assessor about that situation. As far as the recycling, I'm really not sure I have the answer. I don't really know who owns the electronics, if, I know the town benefits because it's less tonnage in our garbage and for recycling, but I don't know if the company that, maybe the administration can answer this, that runs the recycling, if they own that, I mean, it might be an insurance issue, I'm not sure. So I would have to look into that. But I will tell you one thing, you are not the first resident, and I believe we all might have gotten an email, a few of them, at least I did, from the way residents have been treated and spoken to up at the recycling center. And that I have a problem with, because, I mean, any resident that takes the time to go there to recycle, I think should be treated with respect and spoken to with respect. So, and like I said, you're not the first complaint that I've heard about that. Mr. Meyerowitz, I think entertainment is a great thing for the pool, but I think the way to go with that would be if you could get volunteers, maybe high school children, but I don't know what that would mean with insurances, and perhaps Mr. Keough would be able to answer that. As far as the antennas, I sat on the zoning board for seven years, and my memory, I don't remember if we did approve, if it was during my tenure there, but I do know that any antennas or whatever, any permits, has to go before the zoning board to be approved. So I would check with the zoning officer to see, I'm sure that the town would not allow it if they did not go through proper procedure. And the pool comments, I think we can talk about when that resolution comes up. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman, you have a follow-up?
Yeah, thank you. If I could just answer Councilman Guarino's question to Mr. Meyerowitz, what would happen is, is if we put them in default and they were found to be in default, they would lose the right, the right that we gave them back in 2006 to develop, to exclusively develop that property. And we would go back and try to find somebody who can do the project and can follow the contract. Just to remind everybody, they've had the right to do this since 2006, and there's still been no, no movement forward. They revised the plan and got approval a year and a half ago to move forward, and they still haven't done that. And all along, you know, at least in the last few years, they've been delinquent more times, more on their property taxes than they haven't. So that's, that answers the question. But they do own the property, and they would still own the property, nobody would be able to take it away from them, but they wouldn't be able to develop the property, because what the town gave them is the exclusive right to redevelop those areas under our own redevelopment plan. And they would be owning property that they couldn't develop. And just so you know, this happens around the state all the time, when developers do not fulfill the terms of their contract, they lose the exclusive right, and they either have to go back to the drawing board, or the town opens up and starts the process all over. But that's what happens.
Which I think would be the last thing we want to do, because they're already over $50 million into the project, so I would not agree with that.
Can I add, to that, Council President, to that note, and I have to be very careful what I say, but there are legal matters-
That's right.
-that hold this project forward, and perhaps it is a common thing statewide, this happens, because there are legal challenges out there that withhold the process, whether it be financial or whatever that may be. So we have to keep that in mind, that there are several vehicles that may result in a lot of these redevelopment projects not moving forward. And until those vehicles or those situations are cleared up, you're not going to see any progress, and the land just stands there. And nobody likes to see depression. I don't like to see depression. So let's, let's try to do the best to support the situation, clear these hurdles, so that we can move forward, proceed, and get rid of the depressed situation that we have in place.
Good point. Thank you. Mayor, did you have a, no? Yes, we did. Okay. Here you go.
Just a couple thoughts. First, on the tax exempt issue and school kids, and I'm not an expert on tax law. Councilman Cirillo, I think, mentioned that we're ultimately all here, subject to what the state says, and I don't know that the state would allow that. There are some situations in the past where we've had tax-exempt properties that we negotiated pilots with. If you might recall, we negotiated a pilot payment in lieu of taxes with the Devils when they were using tax-exempt property. So there could be voluntary agreements. I don't think we have the ability as a legislative body, though I certainly encourage the council to research that, to impose a tax for school kids on a tax-exempt property. Just to that point, though, I do want to mention that we send out a sewer bill separately in West Orange, that was a choice made long before any of us were here, and the reason we send that out separately, where other towns included in the sewer bill, is because we can sewer bill the tax-exempt properties. So, not a ton of money, but the town discovered years ago that if we can't collect the tax, the law says we can collect the sewer bill, so let's separate that. So at least we do get something for the services and the expenses of the town generated by tax-exempt properties. In regards to the recycling center, and I think several of the council members mentioned it, though there is a vendor that runs the recycling center, there's actually a sub-vendor that runs the electronics components of that. They're contracted to take the components, and Mr. Sapphire mentioned the gold, they do that because in all our phones and all our little gizmos, there's silver, significant silver and gold, and they simply like to recycle them. So, though, he shouldn't have been mistreated, there is an element that we'll have to address, and Jack spoke to Mr. Sapphire, we'll figure out a way that we can accommodate him. But there is a contractual obligation, we just have to be careful of. But we'll certainly talk with the vendors, as, you know, not treating residents respectfully is never accepted. In regards to Mr. Meyerowitz at the pool, I think entertainment's a great idea. I recall, as, and Bill and Edwin probably recall too, we, we used to have local high school bands play at the pool when I was a kid, always a neat night out. So I think it's a good idea, and hopefully Bill thought about that. In regards to redevelopment, and I guess every council meeting can turn into a debate on redevelopment, and I guess that's fine. Just a few things for clarification. The antennas have been there forever. I'm not even sure, we'll find out, I'm not even sure they're operational. So they've been there, they're not new, PRISM didn't add them recently to collect revenue. They've been there, as far as I remember, since Mr. Rosenthal owned the property. So, but you know, we'll certainly look at that. In regards to the tax payments, and look, someone mentioned the Redevelopers Agreement requires them to pay taxes. We don't need a Redevelopers Agreement to force people to pay taxes. You have to by law. And the fact is, though they get a lot of attention for being late, they're late, it's uncomfortable. Would make all our discussions a lot easier if they just paid their taxes on time. But they don't. But they pay the late fees, and they pay the fines. But just to clarify, they're not getting any special treatment. 20% to 25% of our residents and taxpayers are late during the course of a year. It's not just PRISM. So, Mr. Meyerowitz mentioned how in the presentation we did, we talked about the need, as we all know from a budgetary perspective, to fund, balance, a fund for uncollected taxes. That isn't when people pay late. That is when, unfortunately, as we all know, people go a year, two years, without paying their taxes. We are responsible not only for paying our budget, but as we've spoken about frequently, we're responsible for the Board of Education's portion of uncollected taxes. We're responsible for the county's portion of uncollected taxes. The school board and the county are always whole, they always get their money. That's what we balance. So if everyone paid their taxes, be great. Our tax collection was 100%, keep in mind, 1% is $2 million? Million. 1% is a million. 1% collection is a million dollars. So when we can eke up from 98.3 to maybe 98.8, that's a lot of money. If everyone paid, it would be, it would be good. But there's no Redevelopers Agreement that requires to pay taxes, they own the property, they got to pay taxes. They're not getting any special treatment. And let's be clear, I want to repeat that, they're not getting any special treatment. They're paying late fees, and they're paying fines, and when they, when they pay, a little bit late every quarter, they pay them. And let's not, let's not create the wrong impression here, they're not a year behind, they're right now a quarter behind, as is about 20% to 25% of our taxpayers in West Orange. So they're going to pay, just like everyone else is going to have to. As far as the redevelopment, let's also not have any misconception, they own the land. We entered into a Redevelopers Agreement so we would have say in what went on there. Don't, don't create the misconception publicly that if we cancel the Redevelopers Agreement, they can't develop the property, they own it. And America is still a country that's based on the notion of property rights. They can build on that property. They'd have to go back to a board, they'd have to go back to a planning board, maybe even a zoning board, but we cannot take that right away from them under no circumstances. So the administration is supportive of redevelopment, I have been forever. We do not intend to issue the, what is it called?
Default.
The default letter. They pay their taxes, we're working with them. The fact is, as Councilman Cirillo mentioned, they're dealing with lawsuits. So people have the right to file lawsuits, that's right, but make, make no doubt about it, that's what's holding up the project right now. That's what's holding it up. They have a right to voice their objections, they had the right to appeal to the Supreme Court, they did, and that's what's holding up the project. So it's not fair on one side to scream that redevelopment isn't happening, but then at the same time be part of a group of people that filed a lawsuit, it just, to me, seems hypocritical. I'm supportive of redevelopment, we're going to continue to work with them to see that this project happens, hopefully sooner than later. We're not issuing the default letter, we're on them about their taxes, they come due every quarter, they're a little late. To me, as Councilman Guarino mentioned, they're paying 18% nowadays in New Jersey. Why? You voluntarily pay 18% on late fees and interest? To me, it's silly, but we don't necessarily know about their financial situation, that's their business, just as it's any property owner's in-town's responsibility to pay their taxes. We're going to continue to support this project, because as I felt, going back 10 years now, I believe it's the best interest for the downtown and in the best interest for the community. That's it.
Thank you.
If I could.
Thank you.
Council President. I appreciate the mayor speaking about his position on redevelopment, and I appreciate anytime we can get more facts about what's going on with redevelopment. I think that would help a great deal if people, if residents knew more about what was going on with PRISM. But I don't know if the hypocritical comment was directed at me, but I'm just saying, I am unaware- am unaware of any legal issue that prevents them from following their contract. And the contract is very clear. I agree with you. I don't disagree with you that there are people who, commercial properties that aren't paying their taxes. But to me, that's not the issue. I am unaware of any other property in town that has a contractual obligation to be current on their taxes. Excuse me. Please let me finish.
Every resident in town has a contractual obligation to pay your taxes.
Please let me finish. Please let me finish. Would you please? Would you please let me finish?
Gentlemen.
Don't misspeak for me, Councilman. They're not the only, we all have a contractual obligation to pay taxes.
Fine, you can speak afterwards, but please stop interrupting me.
We all do, Councilman.
Make your point. Make your point.
I'm trying to, and he keeps interrupting me.
Go right ahead.
Thank you, Council President. The point I was trying to make is I don't think there's anybody else in town who has a contractual obligation that's in the redevelopment agreement to pay the taxes on time. And if they don't, it's a violation of the contract. That's all I'm saying. And if they are having problems paying the taxes because we don't know about the finances, but what we do know about the finances is they've got other problems with their properties, paying the mortgages on their other properties, then maybe that suggests that they can't ever do the project. But it's not clear to me how we're ever going to get to that point. That's the only point I wanted to make.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, Council President.
Please.
I wasn't speaking about, and he's obviously a little paranoid, I wasn't speaking about the council. But to be clarified, just so there's no misunderstanding, every one of us has a contractual obligation by law to pay our taxes, no different from Prism. Every one of us. We're all subject to the same laws of paying our taxes, interest and penalty at 18%. And if any one of us don't pay our taxes, the township can take the property, period. There's no special circumstances with Prism. That impression should not be created because it's simply not true.
Council President, if I could respond. I really don't appreciate you calling me paranoid. I think that's personal and I think it has no business here at the council meeting. But again, let me just say this. The administration has already recognized that Prism has a responsibility to be current on their taxes. The administration already sent a default letter last, I think it was last year, demanding the taxes, and the taxes were paid. So we've, the administration and the council recognize that they do have an obligation to do this. I don't know why we're not doing it subsequently to that. But the fact remains that the administration has recognized that they do have this obligation to do that. And I'm just concerned that if this eventually does get into litigation, one of the weak points of our defense is going to be that we didn't enforce the terms of the 2006 redevelopment agreement. That's all. And I join you. I really am in favor of redevelopment as well. But at some point, we've got to say whether we can go forward with these guys or not. That's all.
Council President, may I add something?
Yes, Ms. Councilman.
You know, in the last few council meetings, we talked about our First Amendment rights to express ourselves. And we talked about perhaps sometimes conversations get, you know, get a little bit, a little bit more personal. We discuss business in addition to personal. So on one end, we can't say that, you know, we're not allowing that. And on the other end, say, oh, this is getting personal. It has no place in here. So I think we are being a little bit hypocritical sometimes. We're drawing a line on one end. At another end, we're like, oh, you know what? The line doesn't exist. So we have to be very consistent with the way we carry ourselves and what's expected at these council meetings. Thank you, Council President.
If I could just follow up on that, Council President. I wasn't being paranoid. I was demanding civility and respect. I was constantly interrupted by the mayor. I just wanted to finish what I said so I can hear what he says.
Good. So now, let's move on.
He's not paranoid.
Thank you. Okay. Are we going to review the agenda? Yes, please.
Okay. We'll review the agenda now. We have the minutes of March 11, 2014. I know Councilman Krikovia had an issue with some motions, so we may have to postpone.
Okay.
Council President, if I could.
I don't know.
Yes.
Sure. Please explain.
When I was reviewing the minutes of the meeting, and I want to apologize to my colleagues because I did not look at them until today. I have this bad habit of not looking at them until the day of the meeting, which is-
It's not a bad habit.
It's not a good thing for our ordinance because the ordinance requires that we need, any changes have to be made 24 hours ahead of the meeting. But the minutes of the last meeting do not note a number of motions, a number of floor motions that were made during the meeting. And it seemed to me that if there is a motion made, even a floor motion, it should be noted in the minutes. And it wasn't. So I didn't know whether that was our practice, but it looks like Mr. Kizer, our deputy town attorney, is about to weigh in on this.
It's not required by law. You have, the minutes should contain actions taken, meaning resolutions passed, ordinances passed or not passed, but it does not have to contain a reference to every motion made, every comment made. There is case law with respect to minutes. I don't have the citation handy. I think that one of the names in the case is Payton, but I was at one point familiar with it. And basically, the minutes that need to be taken are really pretty sketchy. They're not required to be detailed. Remember that we record these meetings, which we have to do and those recordings are kept. So there's always the opportunity if somebody wanted to, to go to the recordings. But to take extremely detailed minutes is onerous, burdensome, and under all circumstances not necessary and certainly not required by law.
If I could just respond to that, I appreciate that. And I think Mr. Kizer and I have had a little bit of a disagreement on the depth of the minutes. I think if somebody wants to know what happened at a council meeting, they should be able to pick up the minutes. And I find that following the letter of the law doesn't provide that. But I am a little bit concerned that if we actually have motions that are made, that those be recorded. And I don't know whether specifically we have to record floor motions, but I think that would be an appropriate thing to be recording in our minutes. And I don't know what the policy or the practice has been in the court's office.
Would the council like me to review the DVD and we could postpone the minutes till the next meeting? It's not a problem.
I was going to suggest that because I didn't read the minutes with that in mind and-
It's fine. Normally, I do view the DVD and I'm pretty thorough, but I might be-
It was unprecedented that there were that many motions made. They did all fail, but if they need to be recorded.
So we'll postpone.
I second that.
We have bills. Any questions on the bills?
No.
No? Is it set?
Second.
Resolutions? Are there any resolutions being pulled this evening?
I do have a few questions to ask. Councilwoman Spango, any resolutions to pull?
I don't know. There is one little thing, Resolution 5714, just a minor thing, but you have a number sign instead of a dollar sign for the amount.
Yeah, right.
Which is need to be corrected.
While Councilwoman Spango is looking, I'll make an announcement on that. Resolution M on our agenda is 5714, a resolution authorizing award of a contract for A&amp;J contractors. I would like to make an announcement to the residents on Yale Terrace and Harvard Terrace because these are road improvements. And if this is approved, it includes curbs and, yes, and what else? I have to pull the resolution to look. I think the residents will be happy to hear. New granite block curbing, new concrete sidewalks, driveway aprons, new handicap ramps, service walk adjustments, topsoiling, seating, pavement, milling and resurfacing, if that resolution is approved. Councilwoman Spango, anything else?
I'm going to pull Resolution 6314 because of the different questions.
Yes, thank you.
And we're going to have some comment on that.
Okay.
6314.
Yes, yes. On the update? Councilwoman Cirillo.
I'm okay. That's the resolution that I want to discuss.
Councilman Krikovia?
Thank you, Council President. I would like to pull Agenda Item C, Resolution 4714, contract for the town prosecutor. Agenda Item G, Resolution 5114, the emergency temporary appropriation of a funding tax Resolution, I'm sorry, Agenda Item I, resolution authorizing agreement with the emergency communications network for reverse, non-emergency, reverse 911. And I just wanted to ask a quick question on Agenda Item H, 5214, which is a resolution authorizing the renewal of the appointment for our, the township's grant writer. And I just wanted to ask a question because I wanted to try to see if I could make sure that we are following the terms of the contract. The contract provides that the grant writer obtain new grants each year in excess of the compensation, which I think is $28,000 a year. And it defines new grants as monies and/or aid not previously received by the township from particular sources during the prior five years. And I did get an accounting of the last three years. And I just wanted to ask a quick question because each year, we seem to have a Department of Transportation grant that obviously greatly exceeds the cost of the grant writer. But I'm just wondering if that meets the terms of the contract, which is monies and/or aid not previously received by the township from particular sources. We get all of those from the Department of Transportation. And those numbers greatly exceed her compensation, but not necessarily if we took them out. So I'm just wondering if the way the administration reads that contract, do they consider the Department of Transportation grants not to be from the same source? Does that make sense?
No, because these Department of Transportation grants, first of all, your questions are never quick. So when you say I have to ask a quick question, your questions are never quick.
I know. I'm sorry.
But the, these Department of Transportation grants are not automatic. So they, it's not a set amount. They're not automatic. So we do need someone that has to apply for them. So not really sure. They are new. They just happen to be coming from this particular DOT.
So I think what I'm looking at is a different question, which is whether they, under our definition of particular sources, not previously received by the township from particular sources. So you're right, we do have to apply for those grants every year, but they're from the same source. So I'm just wondering if we've ever looked at it. I don't want to hold this up.
I don't think you should. You know why? Because it's a $200,000 grant and there's no match required. So I think, I don't really care where the grants come from and I don't really care how many times we apply for them. When they're all in this awarded column, I'm happy to see them there.
And so am I. I'm just saying if, whether it complies with the contract. And I don't want to hold it up any further. It looks like we don't have a quick answer for the administration unless maybe we do, but I just wanted to ask that.
Thank you.
Council President, as submitted, the administration contends that it does. They're not guaranteed funds. It not varies each year. And as you can appreciate, it's a government grant, which means it's 10 times the work it probably needs to be. But we're happy with it. Ms. Skinner, she's been the grant writer now seven, eight years, nine years. So as submitted, we believe it complies with the contract and we're hoping the council would consider renewing it.
Check it out, I don't see on here, though, I don't see a total. I'm sure I could do the quick math. But do we have a total on what has been awarded? And what is pending?
I think Mr. Gross sent around that to everybody this afternoon. I got it.
I don't have it.
Daniel reports. Yeah, that came in the email, right? Okay.
Okay. Is that a total amount? Excuse me. Oh, no, that I have, but I'm going to add it all back. I added off to see how much it is. Regardless, it exceeds, it exceeds the amount that we are asking her to do, to do this job. Any other questions on the grant writer?
Are there any other resolutions being pulled? Council President, are there any other resolutions?
I have, I do have a question. I see Lenny is here. Lenny, on Resolution 6114, that was the resolution for the contract for the land surveying services on Luddington Road. Can you give us an update on that? Because we know with the mayor's public forum meetings, residents on Luddington, that there was an issue there. And has it been resolved or will this hopefully resolve it?
Well, this is, well, good evening, everybody. This is the first step to resolve that matter. If you will recall, we've had some odor complaints that have emanated from a trunk sewer. A trunk sewer is a little bit different than some of the local sewers in front of your home. It's collecting sewage from a much bigger area of town. And that's just what happened on Luddington Road. We have a trunk sewer that actually emanates along the Pleasant Valley Way corridor. So what this is proposing to do is hire a firm, do some surveying work, get some field data. What we want to do is, there's four homes on Luddington Road, determine the feasibility if we can take those homes off the trunk sewer and put them into the local sewer main that's on Luddington Road, like most of the other homes on Luddington Road. This is not anything with construction. This is just strictly the initial part of a design and feasibility.
Okay. Thank you, Lenny.
If I could just follow up, Mr. LaPorte, because I asked the question and you provided an answer, because I'm always concerned when we see these construction projects starting. And I think you said if we're able to jump over the trunk line, that the total cost for moving the four homes could be as small as, well, it could be as large as maybe $40,000, $10,000 a house?
Yeah, I guess it could be. I'm thinking somewhere in the range of $7,500 to $10,000.
And that would be costs that we would assume because we're responsible for the sewer inside the town lines?
We're responsible because we're, our sewer is creating the problem for this homeowner, these homeowners.
Okay. Thank you.
Lenny, before you go, I did have a question on Resolution J, which is also the, which is a resolution authorizing the amendment for Colonial Woods, previously formerly known as Colonial Woods. Can you just tell us what that, the update on that?
This is a single-family subdivision approved by the planning board, I'm going to say, probably eight years ago. It's been almost seven years ago since the subdivision plot was filed. This is a tract of land. It's about 12 and 3/4 acres. It's in what we'll call the Merklin Track. It's at the extension of Vance Road, at the extension of Colonial Woods Drive. It's north of Warren Road. It's hard to believe, but there's actually a strip of property between the high voltage lines and Route 280 that'll yield 26 building blocks of single-family homes.
Any amendment?
And this is, an amendment, I believe there is a new party that is going to assume the development rights. And that's what this agreement is for.
And everything else stays in place?
Everything else stays, stays the same.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
No.
Okay, so the resolutions for the consent agenda this evening will include A, B, D, E, F, H, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R. And is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Consent agenda has been implemented. Okay, so we go to our ordinances on second reading?
And then go back to resolutions?
Okay. Is that how you do it?
Okay, we'll move on to ordinances on second and final reading. We have an ordinance 2402-14, ordinance creating a new township code section, section two, We have an ordinance 2402-14, ordinance creating a new Township Code Section, Section 2, oh, I'm sorry, Chapter 2, Section 5.3, in order to create a new position of Director of Staff Operations. This is on second and final read, this is to introduce on second and final reading.
Okay, is there a motion?
Motion moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Would you like a voice vote?
On introduction?
Yeah, this is the vote to introduce, yeah.
Just to introduce, okay. All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any questions? There we go. Now we're up to questions. I would like to ask the administration, this is your Director of Staff Operations, the rationale behind this ordinance. It was present, we spoke briefly about it during our budget hearings, came up on first reading. Please provide the rationale behind this ordinance.
Sure. Council President, thank you for, of course, passing that introduction and getting us to this point. You recall, a couple of years ago, the administration had requested of the council, and the council ultimately approved, the creation of a Public Works Director. The rationale then, and I suppose getting us to this point is kind of a genesis from that original discussion, was simply that with so many responsibilities that emanate from Public Works, I think a lot of you would probably agree that most of the calls and emails for service we get from residents have to do with Public Works, whether it's storms, whether it's puddles, whether it's leaf pickup for trees.
Snow.
You know, a lot of what we're surrounded with emanates from that department. And here's the reality. If you go back to 1990, we had four full-time engineers. Four. Today we have one. And Lenny serves in the dual role of being the director of now the rest of the guys who have to provide all the service that we see every day. We drive down the street, every day we take our kids to the park, every time we go to the pool and everything else. So the rationale a couple of years ago was that we simply needed more administrative assistance in that department to function as efficiently and properly as possible, especially, and look, government kind of wrote the book on doing more with less. You know, government could always use more people, but you simply can't afford it, so you do the best you can. That department, unlike all the other departments, has been a steady decline in staff since the 90s. And yet, we have more roads, we have more developments, we have more parks, we have more town property. So the responsibilities don't change, we get the manpower's change. And as we also can all appreciate, you need strong leadership to get things done officially with limited resources. So that was the rationale two years ago. We then, as you recall, at the end of that year says, you know what, we'll do without it, we'll take that position out, and we moved on. What's happened since then, as we all know, we celebrated his retirement, Glenn was a great guy. Glenn McCartney, who was the superintendent who kind of handled the day-to-day for Public Works, in conjunction with Lenny, the official head of the department, but Lenny fulfilling his engineering duties, Glenn retired. Additionally, with sadness, we lost Jerry Hugel, who was the architect. So now Lenny is responsible for handling some of the duties that used to stem from Jerry's desk, the engineering desk, look, there's how many resolutions on this agenda and every agenda that stem from Lenny's desk, and still managed to run the department and deal with storms and all this other stuff. So what the administration's position was that we need a strong administrative staff. And even talking with some of the supervisors and superintendents in Public Works, especially during what has been a very trying winter, even they were saying, you know what, we need guys to kind of help pull the strings. We're all out plowing and moving snow and doing that stuff, but with Glenn's absence, Lenny's pulled in 100 different directions, we need strong support. So I think what we came up with was a clever solution. It's no different than when you're managing a sports team. You got to make do with the talent you got on your bench. And one thing I've seen for all these years, that Chief Abbott is a fantastic administrator. Besides his significant resume in terms of advanced degrees and the schooling he's put himself through to be properly trained, he has, in real-world experience, run a police department, and a police department is a tough department to run. Simple as that. So we were looking at our bench and says, you know what, let's take advantage of the talent we have. We've seen firsthand that he's got significant skill set, and we think it's the skill set that matches what we need in Public Works, to make Lenny a little bit able more to focus on the engineering responsibilities. We're also, as an aside, going to introduce a capital budget to the council this year for the first time in four years. So that means there's going to be a whole bunch of more projects that are now on Lenny's desk. So we can't continue to function and expect to function properly in what is the department that people most touch every day, the streets, the parks, the sidewalks, the way we've been operating. So we talked with the chief and said, would you be willing to take a leave of absence, not asking him to abdicate his chief's title, one that he's earned and served in so well over the years, and kind of fill in and help us get a little bit more organized in a department that needs administrative leadership? So after several conversations, he seemed willing, and we were excited by the prospects. It's not a financial shift, he's not retiring, he's simply going to retain his right to be chief and come over and help us administer the Public Works Department. So, you know, we continue to function in what's an important department, often overlooked, but an important department while at the same time introducing several new projects. And as I think you can all appreciate in your own lives, there's nothing worse from the, from the administration's perspective than to approve projects and have them languish for eight years. So we expect as soon as the capital budget is approved, we're going to hit the ground running with this new slew of capital projects. And that's not going to be practical if we don't have strong administrative support in Public Works. And we think the chief brings the skill that we're looking for. And just for background, so you know, this wasn't kind of just a conversation over lunch one day, we did advertise through proper channels for a Director of Public Works. Though we had a lot of nice people apply and certainly nice-looking resumes, you know, there was just nothing that really jumped out at us at what we really needed. And what's always uncomfortable in that situation, and maybe many of you might have experienced it in your own life, sometimes someone interviews really well, and two months later, not so much. So though some of them seem like good quality people, we weren't comfortable enough to take the chance when we knew that we had someone here with a strong skill set who can do and fill in the exact pieces that we have been looking for administratively these last couple of years. So this started really a couple of years ago. And as things evolved, as Glenn retired, as Jerry passed, it just kind of made it more clear that we needed assistance, and a very trying winter kind of brought it all to the surface. So the chief is stepping up and going to help out, he's technically going to still fill the role as chief, he's still the chief, but, and he'll be ultimately responsible for the police department, but he's going to spend an overwhelming majority, if not nearly all of his time, at least in the short term, trying to help us administer the Public Works Department, welcome a new slew of projects that are going to be on their plate, and make sure they get done efficiently and effectively as the taxpayers deserve. So that's kind of our rationale. We're really excited that he was interested, and we certainly hope the council will consider it and approve it. Happy to answer any questions?
I know the advanced degrees, the administrative skills, it makes sense. And then Lenny with his strength in engineering, I understand the rationale. Do you have any questions? Anyone? Any questions?
When are we going to open it up to the public?
Yeah, we, oh, we do, but we can talk.
Is it after us?
Yeah, with public comments, please.
I mean, if the council wants it first, then you have to open it up to public comments.
Public comments?
So I guess my question is, how exactly does our chief of police go on a leave of absence? And how short-term is it? And how is he getting paid or not paid? And the version, the purpose of this that we heard this week is completely different from what was explained last meeting, where it was more about facilitating efficiency and cooperation between departments, which, you know, and to increase oversight of personnel. How can you increase, for example, oversight of personnel in the police department when the police chief is on leave? And how does he spend the overwhelming amount of time as Director of Operations but still act as chief? Like, I'm sure this must work somehow, it must make more sense than it sounds like, but it doesn't seem to make any sense to me from this point of view.
Thank you.
Council President?
Yes.
Perhaps I misspoke, because I always have to remember civil service has very specific terms that trigger all kinds of alarms. It's a leave of absence in that he's not going to be the full-time chief, but it's not a leave of absence in the civil service technical term, so forgive me if I misspoke from a technical term. But, and I apologize, I wasn't here last meeting. I don't know that what I said is any different than what Ms. Freebold said, maybe we used different languages. So I still stand by what the administration's position is, that we're going to take advantage of his skill set in an area of town and a department that needs his skill set.
I think my response was going to be basically the same thing, because the administrative functions would also increase efficiency. So to me, that is synonymous with an administrative function of personnel. Any other comments before we, any other comments?
Mayor, if you could just explain, I think what Ms. Freebold was asking is, if you could just describe what happens when the chief of police takes a leave of absence, and who's going, that's, I think, what was her question. Explain the table of organization.
Again, I spoke anecdotally and not legally, it's not a leave of absence. He's still the chief, he's just going to serve in this role in two jobs, but candidly, so there's no misconception, he's going to be serving in this role a significant amount of time because that's the department that needs it. Lenny, for all his skills, all his expertise and all his experience, you know, we all know from our own private lives and our professional lives, if you try to do 15 things, you do them wrong. You know, most people can, you've got to focus on what you're good at. And Lenny and the responsibilities that department has are too important to not get done well and to just ignore the fact that we have 40 men, 43 men out there every day serving this community. So he's going to be serving in that capacity because that's where we need the leadership and the administrative skills, so Lenny can focus on what Lenny does best, and that is being engineer for this community.
I understand that, but what I think maybe if you explain is, if the chief is running Public Works, how the table of organization, where the deputy chiefs, that's what I think her concern was.
Sure. As you know, I think everyone was here, we promoted a deputy chief, I don't know, about three weeks ago. So certainly on the day-to-day, the new deputy chief will handle most of that leadership, and if, with other promotions that might take place, will handle the leadership. Obviously, it's always going to be subjected to the chief's discretion, and I'm assuming, and have been part of some conversations already, where the deputy chief is probably going to seek the opinion, or seek the guidance, or certainly seek
Right.
the experience and professional experience that Chief Abbott has in the task. But that aside, the administration is very confident with the deputy chief and the other leadership within the department to run the day-to-day, which, just so there's clarification, the chief's function in any department is to run the day-to-day. And we're pretty confident in the leadership we have there to do that. Chief isn't leaving town, he's just across town and an email away. And we suspect that when certain circumstances warrant, that leadership will seek his opinion and seek his guidance, no different than any of us do periodically seek the leadership, or seek the opinion of some of the leadership in the various departments in town.
Could you explain, because I did get a few numerous phone calls, is this an increased cost to the township?
No.
I think you need to get that point across, because people think it's being, that it's, there's this new position being created, and so if you could explain that a little bit.
Look, it's not. And sometimes these things, and it's the political world we live in, I respect that. Sometimes these people think there's something funny with the chief is going to be Public Works guy. The alternative, and the council approved it two years ago, is we create a whole new position for a whole new person. We didn't want to do that.
Right.
We didn't want to do that. And we felt, like I said, you take advantage of what's on your bench. We had what we've been looking for right there all the time.
So it would actually be more expensive to hire someone to run Public Works?
It'd be more expensive to hire somebody else, yeah.
Between health benefits and salary?
And we didn't want to do that. We didn't want to do that. So like I said, we were thrilled that the chief was willing to take on this challenge. And we think it's going to work well.
I think another point of clarification is that we seem to be concentrating on Public Works, but this is more an overarching administrative function, that maybe that's going to come up next on the table of organization, that it's not just Public Works.
You know, look, at some point, and all of our terms in life are limited, so we'll only plan nine months out. We've lost other directors
Right.
and other leadership, high-ranking leadership positions in this community, both through illness and both through retirement. So there's been a void there. And some of what our struggle has been is, how do you restructure to maximize the skill we have and still provide the services we are obligated to our taxpayers? So I think some of that'll take shape, but in the short term, it's clearly in Public Works. And again, it's because of the increased workload, a retirement and a death in key positions in that department, you can't, you can't hide that. So as it evolves into maybe an overall restructuring, I think that's the intention, but for now, I don't want to create that impression, the need is with Public Works, because there's simply too much work to do. As great as Lenny has been and as talented and respected as he is, you just can't expect one person to do and be in 10 different places, it's just not, it's just not practical.
Right.
And not fair to him.
Right. The administrative work and the engineering work.
Yes.
Any other comments, questions, councilmen?
Yes, please. Mayor, how long do you estimate that this is going to go on?
You know, Joe, I say it half jokingly, councilman, half jokingly and half serious. The fact is, in this form of government, we can only plan as long as our term. So we expect at least the eight months left in my term, we can't plan beyond that. If we find, and with respect to Chief Abbott, if a month from now he comes to me pulling his hair out saying, get me out of here, I want to be a police officer again, then we'll deal with that when the time comes. But we don't think this is a temporary fix, you know, of a couple of months. There are responsibilities Public Works has year-round. The season may change their responsibilities, but it's not like they go home for the winter, they're always here, and there's always responsibility. So we certainly think it's probably, at least for the next nine months, we'll plan, or whoever's in the mayor's seat will plan accordingly at that point.
Okay. Is this just going to be focused on Public Works Department?
I think certainly in the short term. Again, like I mentioned to the council president, we do have a need to restructure our leadership. And again, some of the department heads, and I don't want to name names, department heads in the four years that I've sat here have retired, some have left because of illness, some department heads passed, others retired. So there is a need to restructure how our departments are managed, and we think this is certainly the first step in that. So I'm not sure exactly how it evolves. Jack and Mr. Gross and I have talked about different concepts, but you can't talk big-picture concepts when the Public Works, because of recent events, retirements and other things, needs leadership. So that's certainly the short-term problem. And that's where we think Chief Abbott can bring a wealth of experience and talent to that responsibility.
And, thank you. So the next question, just to follow up on Councilwoman Spango's question about compensation. Sometimes when people take on additional jobs, they get stipends?
No. And that's why, I apologize for saying leave of absence. It would have been different if it was a legal civil service leave of absence. It's not a leave of absence. He's going to still be paid as the chief, still probably be Director of Operations slash chief. I'm not sure how that looks to be legal with civil service and their crazy rules, but it's not any additional compensation. He's going to be paid what the chief is paid currently.
Okay. If this is a reduction in managing responsibilities within the Public Works Department, is there going to be any change in the compensation for anybody there now?
No, it's not, it's not a reduction. The fact is, because of circumstances, there's two vacancies in leadership, so there's no one. So it's not a reduction in other responsibilities, there currently is no one there.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong then, is he going in as the head of Public Works? He will now be the top person in Public Works?
Again, I don't want to speak outside of civil service rules, but that's the mayor's intention, yes. Yeah, he is going to be working alongside Lenny to run the day-to-day, administer the Public Works Department, yes.
Okay. Not to belabor the point, but is there going to be one person who is responsible for the Public Works Department going forward?
Yes. If the council approves and Chief Abbott doesn't call me tomorrow and say, I'm not interested, it's going to be Chief Abbott, at least in the short term until we get better organized. And obviously, no different than any of the responsibilities we do, we evaluate these things periodically. Truth is, I think if you told me two years ago this is the direction we would have went, we would have said, this is crazy. But, so things always evolve, so who knows? But in the short term, yeah. We're going to ask Chief Abbott to run the day-to-day, because Lenny has slower responsibilities as his town engineer, especially with the fact that we don't have an architect anymore that used to handle a lot of those small packets that the council often votes on, used to be handled from our architect. We don't have that anymore. So with the advent of the new capital budget, the loss of an architect, and an administration that likes to see things get done quickly, Lenny's got his hands full right now. But we still have to pay attention to what the Public Works Department has to do. So in the short term, yeah, it's going to be Chief Abbott.
Okay. So again, not to belabor the point, but if whatever he says to the Public Works Department goes, and he reports to the business administrator and to you?
Yes. Uh, yes.
Okay. Just a quick question. I am familiar with Chief Abbott's academic background, and he obviously runs the largest department in town. Does he have any particular public works background? I don't think, like, engineering or anything like that?
I don't know if he cuts his own grass or not. I can't say that. He says no. No, but we think, joking aside, councilman, you know, besides the police department is the largest department, it's a paramilitary organization, runs very structurally sound, and we think
Sorry.
those skills are transferable. Obviously, as in any professional task we take on, sometimes you have to learn the language of a new industry, but a lot of those skills are transferable. Management is a very underrated skill. I think a lot of people are called managers and maybe aren't necessarily managers. So, I think Chief Abbott has demonstrated he's a strong manager, and that's what we need in the department. So, he'll learn the language, he'll learn how we plow, and he's got great guys who've been there a long time, who will provide a wealth of experience that they've had in the department to fill in some of those blanks. But the key ingredient we're looking for is, is a strong manager, and we think that's what he brings.
And you raise a point that I'm a little concerned about, which is that he's, would be going from running a paramilitary organization to running a not-paramilitary organization, and I do have a little concern with that.
I'm sure some of the guys do, too. There's no doubt that, as in any new challenge, there are bumps. We'll deal with them.
As part of this efficiency and getting things moving, is there any discussion about potential layoffs? Would that be part of the efficiencies?
No. Truth is, and we had this conversation a couple of times in the past, we privatized grass-cutting services. In fact, I think it was kept on consent tonight, a couple of years ago, because we were so really challenged in the staffing levels there, that we were simply folk, forced at that point to either hire more people or privatize it. So, we chose to privatize it. So, the numbers really haven't changed beyond that, but again, the responsibilities continue to grow. So, we don't think that's a department that can stand the loss of personnel without wholesale privatization again, and we're not ready, at least the administration currently, to take that on. So, we don't see layoffs likely in that department. And candidly, we introduced a zero budget to the council this year, so the layoffs always kinda loom depending on the budget. We didn't think that was necessary this year. We were able to come in without a tax increase and keep staffing levels the same. As we all know, those things in municipal government change year to year. Next year, we could have a $5 million deficit. It's sometimes hard to predict. This year, it wasn't required, and we didn't think it necessary to do that. And certainly in that department, we don't think it's realistic. If anything, you know, with these snowstorms, we found ourselves short-staffed, to be honest with you, so.
Just to follow up on that, we had a discussion about that in the last council meeting, about the difference between what the budget requires and a tax levy and what tax rate the people might see. And I was trying to get Mr. Gross to commit that there wouldn't be any further decline in our tax base and our assessables, our assessed value, and he wouldn't do it. So, perhaps you're doing that now?
No, I would never do that, and I would argue, though that it's an important part of the equation, I personally think the tax rate is a misnomer. You know, it's a product of what the assessed value is and what the budget requirement is. So, tax rate might fluctuate because the assessed value fluctuates. Bottom line is, our budget is not increasing. In fact, I don't think our spending even did it. So, we kept our spending the same. So, the tax rate, just goes to show you, in my opinion, and it's an opinion, that the rate's a misnomer. Here, our spending didn't increase, but yet the rate changed, and the rate changed because the assessed values changed. So, to me, though it's part of the equation, and we frequently hear questions from members of the public about the tax rate, I'm not so interested in the tax rate. I'm interested in what we're taxing, and this year, we're not adding any new taxes, and beyond that, we didn't even change spending. So, if you look at tax rates around the county, there's not always a correlation between what the rate is and how much they're actually paying out of pocket, because the assessed values haven't changed so much. So, though I appreciate the part of the argument, 'cause it's an important part of the equation to me, and maybe I'm misspeaking, to me, what's important is, what am I spending in dollars? And this year, the residents of West Orange are not spending any more in dollars, and the township, as a council, is not spending any more than we spent a year ago.
Yes, but as you know, the, our total assessed value has been declining for years, and that means our tax rates go up more than the tax levy, so.
But, but in fairness, no one here, short of Superman popping out of a telephone booth, can change the assessed value. That's a global issue that we have no control over. So, we do the best we can to have a strong community, to have strong amenities like a pool that we'll talk about later, to provide good services, to promote our schools, to promote local business, like the council recognized Select Hilling, because you hope to create a community that's desirable. I've been doing this a long time, and I can't tell you what the one key ingredient is of increasing values. I just know that the issues that increase values or decrease values doesn't stop at property lines. It doesn't stop at West Orange borders. You know, we do the best we can locally with what we can control to make our township desirable. I was talking to realtors this week, and they said 2014's going really well. So, hopefully, some of those things change. I don't wanna jinx ourself. Kevin Dillon would, you know, probably hit me in the side of the head if I mentioned it, but with the deadline looming, very few tax appeals this year. So, we're hoping that maybe we've survived the wave. Values are increasing, and, you know, we were a product of devastating recession that wasn't unique to West Orange, and we've done the best we could to mitigate that. And a big reason we've done that, with the council's help, is down property values, you don't raise taxes. So, we didn't raise taxes collectively four years of the five that we've all been working together, and the reason being, how do you justify raising taxes when you're losing tax appeals 'cause the values are too low? So, we've done the best we could to hold the line on that, short of that 1.4, 1.47, whatever number was the one year, in five years. When you look at our neighboring towns, Roseland, not to pick on them, in the same amount of time, they've raised taxes 24 percent. So, we felt that, you're right, I'm right, you can't control property values, it's frustrating, but the worst thing you could do when property values are down is raise taxes. So, we've done the best we can to at least address that. But I do think signs are changing where values are increasing, and I think we've done a good job as a community to hold the line on taxes, but to create a community that's desirable. And you see it even with the schools. The schools will tell you, they're busting at the seams. So, though we'd all like values to be higher, as investors, all of us are investors in this community, a lot of young families are moving here, so that's not a bad thing. There's a price to pay for that, but if young families are choosing to live in West Orange, then that says a lot. We just have to be responsible as local government to do the best we can to steward that.
Right. But as our assessables go down in value, that means people don't value owning property here anymore. So, that's, I'm with you. I hope, I hope our assessed values go up. We've got $1.5 million that we want to borrow to pay for taxes, successful tax appeals tonight, so that's always, always my concern. And I'm sorry for getting off on a tangent. I just didn't want people, when they hear zero tax, I just didn't want them to think, okay, if we keep our tax levy the same, it doesn't necessarily mean that our taxes won't go up more. 'Cause that's what happened last year. Our taxes went up, but the levy went up 1.5 percent, and the actual tax rate went up about, I think, 2.3 percent, so.
The rate did.
Yes.
Not the dollars out of pocket.
Right, but it's the rate that everybody cares about.
I don't get it, Joe.
See, look at their taxes. My taxes are going up 2.3 percent.
I don't give, I don't care about the rate. I don't know what I'm paying. What am I writing a check for? And it just shows no clarity, there's no misunderstanding. The residents of West Orange will not pay any more this year than they did a year, and that's not because our assessed value's low. You know, in the past, we've been able to not raise taxes in this town when values went up, but spending went up. We're not increasing spending, and we're not increasing the amount people have to pay for the services we provide. Tax rate's gonna fluctuate, you're absolutely right, and that's frustrating. I do think that trend is changing, but I'll disagree with you respectfully. I don't give a damn what the tax rate is, I care what I'm writing the check for. And that's just how I would make the argument.
Okay. Just back to this, one more, one more question that I have at this time. Are there any written goals or objectives or deliverables in this new position?
We didn't get there yet, simply, as the cliche goes, we didn't want to, yeah, some things are in the wings, but from a personal perspective, we didn't wanna put the cart before the horse. If the council was so inclined to approve this, and the chief comes in tomorrow, should the council approve it and say, "I'm glad they approved it, and I'm ready to get forward, I'm ready to move forward," then we'll sit down and address what the administration's objectives are.
Okay. Thank you.
More specifically than the ordinary.
Thank you.
Council President.
Councilman Corino.
Hi, thank you, Council President. Mayor Perici, just a question, remember this overview, is that for no increased cost in personnel, we're getting actually, for civil service reasons, okay, we're getting a COO. Is exactly what you're getting?
Yes.
You're getting a chief operating officer. We have a CFO, okay? Under that fact, will Mr. LaPore be able to focus more on doing his work, and will this limit the things that he has to go outside to have things done?
Two, two different questions, but I'll address them quickly. And again, I don't want anyone to think this is a lack of confidence or a lack of Lenny's abilities.
Right.
Lenny simply can't be everywhere, and with a whole bunch of new projects coming, Lenny needs to focus on that. So, I guess two questions. Lenny's gonna focus on what Lenny really should be focusing on as our engineer, and as someone who knows the township and how to get things done better than anybody. That's not necessarily to say we won't be before the council for, as tonight, with hiring engineering firms to do some specs and things like that, simply because, especially with our architect no longer here, and Lenny juggling a lot, it's not always practical to think Lenny can create specs. We think it's sometimes more practical, and not only efficient, we think timeliness. And there is a financial impact. If we approve a project tomorrow, and because we try to do everything ourselves, we don't go out to bid on that project for two years, and it's happened in the past, sometimes four or five years, they end up costing much more. So, it's important to the administration that any project we approve, with the council's approval of the capital budget hopefully in the near future, that those projects are gonna be out to bid, if not completed, by the end of the year. So, we think, besides the fact, if we're gonna spend the money, we should do it quickly, we think there's a financial impact if you don't. So, I don't want you to think that Lenny's gonna be able to do everything. We're still gonna be before the council, but someone still has to coordinate that and oversee that, and get the proposals from the engineering firms and quarterback all these projects. So, I don't know that that would necessarily be realistic either.
Okay. If I may continue, but to that point, it's gonna allow the department managers, quote-unquote, to really focus on what's going on in their departments, and maybe find things, have the time to find ways to do things better?
Yes, we think, again, just from a practical perspective, I can't speak beyond nine months, you know, none of us can, but I do think that in time, once some effort is spent to organize Public Works a little bit, and given the loss of leadership we've had, we think the chief has a slew of skills in an underrated area that he's gonna help in the overall reorganization of the, of how the town is structured and how we deliver services. You know, look, just as an example, and this is gonna be a bad example and getting way ahead of myself, not too long ago, I think we had six directors, we had eight directors in various departments. I think we're down to three, but that doesn't mean all those departments don't have a function. So, we think in some way, things have to be restructured a little bit. So, I have no doubt that if things work out, if the chief finds it rewarding to take on this new challenge, that he's gonna be a major asset in other areas as we look to restructure how we, how we operate in order to do so more effectively. Again, just to repeat, in the last five years, we're down 71 employees that we had only that handful of years ago. So, that means we still have those services we have to do. You have to maximize, you have to do what I said earlier, government is always forced to do, and that's to do more with less.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Mayor.
So, and the chief is here, and we're not talking behind his back, he, everything is out in the open. I'm gonna make a motion to approve ordinance to
If I could just, one more time, I'm sorry. I just wanted to follow up on the discussion about compensation, because I wanted to make that clear, but I also wanted to just ask and clarify the financial impact of doing this. I'm assuming that promoting Deputy Chief Corcoran to his current position was related to the potential that this might happen, and
No, interestingly not, it wasn't. The test for Deputy Chief had been called a while ago, eight months, nine months ago. Civil service takes a while to schedule tests, because they all have opportunity to study. Then they take the test, and you wait months for the result. So, no, that, not necessarily true. The call for the deputy chief's exam went almost nine months ago, if not, I'm not sure exactly, but quite a while ago. So, no. Parallel, maybe, but one was not because of the other. What may be, if, you might say that one was a result of another, because once the administration decided to make a deputy chief, maybe this kinda helped us think, well, you know what, we do have leadership there, maybe this is something we could explore. So, it was not necessarily because of the other.
Right, so the test is taken, but that doesn't necessarily mean that whoever scores best on the test automatically gets
No.
that promotion.
No, we had committed to make the deputy chief.
Oh, you had committed to
Before we decided to do this, yeah.
Oh.
It was retiring. If you recall, a deputy chief retired a year or so ago.
Yes.
Yeah, so there was a position there, and we, and we filled it.
'Cause I was just thinking, when Chief Corcoran moved up, that meant a number of other moves upward in the department.
Yeah, that night that he was promoted, we promoted a captain and a lieutenant as well. There was no sergeants to promote, because the results of the most recent sergeant exam haven't been posted yet. They'll be posted soon, and most likely, that one position will be filled in accordingly.
Okay. 'Cause that's what I was looking at, that that is, I thought it was one of the financial ramifications of doing this, but you're saying that, that
No, look, everything we do has a financial impact, but this was contemplated in the overall presentation of the budget. So, you know, there's always that financial impact, but sometimes, and I'm not a smart enough guy here to do that, you might promote a guy, but maybe it's because a guy who's paid more retired, so even though that guy's getting a couple bumps, he's still way less than the other guy was. Now, you're hiring a guy way less than all of them. So, I'm not sure of the actual variance in the dollars, but the whole plan that we've asked the council to consider was contemplated, and it might have a financial impact in a specific position, doesn't on the town. It's still part of our overall freeze-in spending from a year ago.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none, I will make a motion to approve Resolution 2, I'm sorry, ordinance on second and final reading, 2402-14, to create a new position of Director of Staff Operations.
Okay, so, Council President Morton, Stephanie Fied, Councilman Cirillo. Let me do a voice vote. Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Corino?
Yes.
Councilman Prokovia?
No.
Councilwoman Spango?
Yes.
And Council President McCourt?
Yes.
This will be advertised according to law.
Thank you. Our second ordinance is ordinance 2403-14, and ordinance amending Chapter 2, Section 14.2, for the revised general ordinances entitled Department Generally Table of Organization, and make a motion to introduce on second and final reading.
Your second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Comments or
Public comment?
Is there any public comment on the table of organization? Seeing none, colleagues? Any comments on the table of organization?
Yeah, I would just like to start off the way you started off the first one, which is, what's, what's the rationale? What's the compensation? What's the financial impact of having a second position?
Again, the financial impact is that there's no increase in the budget this year. So, this, again, was contemplated as a possibility when the budget was presented to council. So, if any moves are made, there's always a financial impact on that specific area. Nothing is at a net gain and a net loss that we do. Nothing is that a net gain and a net loss that we do. There's always going to be some sort of impact. But it was contemplated as far as the budget and does not increase the spending to this township if we move in this direction pending, of course, welcoming the council's consideration.
And what's the rationale? I'm sorry.
The rationale is that if we have deputy chief with wealth of experience retire, we're going to have the chief focusing on another area for the township. There's a likelihood that you need, you still need to run the police department in what is perhaps, and I said earlier, not just in West Orange, the most challenging department to run as you're dealing literally with life and death. So we have some new leadership in some of the positions of leadership and some of the superior officers, and we think having the possibility and the option to have another deputy chief in the light of this reorganization is beneficial to still operate the department. So we're asking council for consideration of doing this. There's no guarantee, as I mentioned earlier in the first ordinance, that if it doesn't work out, that anyone promoted won't, you know, won't be demoted. That's just a reality sometimes, but we think having this option enables us to operate as efficiently as before. We have full confidence in the deputy chief who's assumed that position, but he is new in that role. So I don't think having other senior officers there assisting in the day-to-day operations, even with the chief's input and recommendations, is a bad thing. So again, it was contemplated in this overall plan, always with the goal to not increase spending. Would this specific line item increase spending? Yeah, of course, but the overall spending of the township remains the same, and it's no increase in spending and no tax increase.
So let me, I'm sorry, I just want to clarify. Is there plans to put somebody in this second position now that that's why we're creating it?
We think there's likely, yeah, yeah. Again, I don't know what's going to happen tomorrow. We were all, a lot of our plans to move forward have hinged upon the council's approval. As you're aware, most of what the administration does inquires council's approval. So though we have a plan, it's ultimately going to rely on the council's support tonight. But yeah, we think that's probably the direction we'll go.
Okay. And is there some reason, I can certainly understand in a situation where the police chief, whatever he's doing, he's moving to another position, so you need a deputy police chief. I don't understand the rationale for a second deputy police chief who almost certainly would be promoted from among the next management level down.
Well, again, and I'm a big believer in history, I'm a big believer in perspective. Let's go back to the 90s. We had five deputy chiefs. Now whether or not that was rational or not, I can't argue, I'm not a police officer. So we're way understaffed in that area anyway. And, excuse me, and let's go back to what we all say kind of loosely, it's a paramilitary organization. And we say it loosely, but it's real life to them. You need leadership, you need structure. So we think in the fact that we're going to very heavily rely on the chief to serve in another role, that the department still needs leadership to operate on a daily basis. So with no chief, we think two deputy chiefs is reasonable. And again, we had two deputy chiefs as of only a couple of years ago before that time. So it's two years ago. So, yeah, so if you recall, and I'm not sure, I think you were here, Councilman, not too long ago, the township passed the table of organization ordinance, and they left flexibility in the various ranks. For whatever reason, even though we used to have four and five deputy chiefs, they left it out in the deputy chief's title and it was simply an oversight. You always kind of want the flexibility to move guys around, to take advantage. Again, and I don't want to kind of repeat myself all the time, but it's, you know, certainly the world I know, you take advantage of what's on your bench. You take advantage of the skill set you have within your ranks. And I think this helps do this, but still manage with the same personnel, not hiring new guys, but do so efficiently.
Well, perhaps that's the case, but I'm just, again, we seem to be running the department the last few years with no deputy chief, well, one year for no deputy chief and at least a couple of years with one. And I'm just not hearing, you know, it's just me, I'm not hearing the compelling reason to put this in place and then when we fill it, we get another sort of this roll-up that has significant financial implications for...
Well, just to that point, keep in mind, and I respect that, and that was a concern of the administration's, and though we might make a deputy chief, that's the plan pending council approval, and we might then make the captains to fill those, we're not doing the same roll-up all the way down the ranks. So that is often the case, and I think over time, though well-intentioned, I think that's how the town got to five deputy chiefs and five sergeants. So though we might promote the senior positions, we don't plan on promoting all the way down the line because we don't want to create that same disproportionate level of upper management compared to police officers. So though it might be a deputy chief and then the captains' roles to fill it, because the captains really run the day-to-day in terms of direct contact with the men, we don't plan on doing that all the way down the line to kind of get away from what your concerns are as they are shared by the administration.
Thank you.
Councilman Cirillo?
Mayor, I'm having a problem. Explain to me, because I remember, I believe it was in your first term, when the police department was top-heavy and there were a lot taken out of white shirts and we laid off police officers. What happens? We had one deputy chief, now you're asking for two. What happens when and if Chief Abbott decides to return from his, however you want to call it, I want to say leave of absence, and says, you know, I don't want to do public works, I'm coming back as the chief? What happens to two police captains? A director?
The fact is...
Deputy chief.
They might be demoted. You know, one of them might be demoted. That's always a reality.
And you, I mean, civil service, you can demote one down?
Absolutely.
So this is not necessarily a permanent thing?
No, and again, Councilwoman, and I don't want to make light of it, by law, this administration can only plan nine months in the future.
I understand that.
So what happens or who happens to be sitting in this mayor's role come January 1st, they'll ultimately get to say whatever they want to say. But if this really doesn't work out like the administration hopes, then the likelihood is yeah, then they'll, they won't be able to fill that position.
And I have one other question. The amount of money that's going to be required to increase the supervisory rank, will that affect the number of new officers hired? Would that hold?
No, no. In fact, the new officers that had been budgeted, they actually started yesterday, today? Yesterday. They started yesterday in their training, spend two weeks in-house and then go to the academy. So that hasn't impacted that at all.
So we're going to hire more patrolmen?
Recently welcomed, the same night as you recall, when we promoted these officers we're talking about, we also sworn a new police officer who doesn't have to go to the academy because he was trained in Maplewood. A West Orange resident transferred here once his slot opened up on the list, so we welcomed him. We recently welcomed two or three guys who finished the academy, and now this class of 10, 10, started their training yesterday. So that hasn't impacted that at all. There's going to be that time before they're on the job, you know, that's just a logistical reality, they have to finish their training first. But those officers will be on the streets certainly before the summer, so it hasn't impacted that at all. No, and that was clearly the goal. You know, we've asked the council for new officers, in fact, this year, the budget included an additional officer, so we've been trying to add in that department. So we wouldn't take away from that or undo, though unreal, you know, not what anyone wanted, and it wasn't, it was an unwelcome change, but you know, it was certainly, we didn't want to undo what happened a couple of years ago by getting more guys into patrol. So now that was not the goal, and we don't think this impacts that at all. Again, we're not going right down the line with the promotions, just in the upper management, to see that the department continues to run well. And we think it's reasonable and we think it's practical. You know, I know it's, and look, I don't want to undermine the impact on dollars. This administration has been very conscious of dollars. We've cut our spending, we've cut our workforce, we had to raise taxes four out of five years. We get that. But at some point, no matter how bad the world might be financially, you got to pick up the garbage, you got to run a police department, you got to plow the snow. You know, we're in that business where you can't get away from that. You can't look at everything from a cost perspective because no matter how many times you turn the numbers up and down, garbage is a losing proposition for the township. Snow plowing is a losing proposition. The reality is, police department, it's a losing proposition, costs us money, more money than any other department, arguably the most important. So I understand we have to be careful in our roles here in local government, but at some point, you got to do things that fulfill our mission.
I agree.
And sometimes those things mean dollar. It has to always be as part of an overall global picture. And the global picture this year was to restructure, to fill in some needs where we had them, maintain department efficiency in other departments, and not raise taxes. And we did that, and we're asking the council for their consideration with this as part of that overall plan.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Good discussion. I'm going to make a motion on ordinance 24-0314 to adopt approved Department Generally Table of Organization.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Garino?
Yes.
Councilman Krokovia?
No.
Councilwoman Spango?
Yes.
And Council President McCartney?
Yes.
This ordinance will be advertised according to law.
Thank you, Mayor. We have an ordinance on first reading, ordinance 2404-14. This is an ordinance creating Chapter 25, Section 5A.
15A, excuse me.
I'm sorry, 15A, entitled prohibition of certain advertising on real property without owner's permission. I have a motion to introduce on first reading.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Garino?
Yes.
Councilman Krokovia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Spango?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Yes. I would like to ask the administration the genesis of this particular ordinance about advertising on property without an owner's permission.
The problem is, is that we have a lot of people that are running around and signs up all over the place, and we have contacted individual companies already and told them that they will be fined here on out if we sign, like rent your house on your house.
Council President, it's a pet peeve of the administration, these, we buy junk cars, buy your house for cash, they hang them all over poles all over town.
Liquidation sales.
Yeah, so we've been aggressively trying to go after them, candidly.
We're going to call this the Mayor Parisi ordinance.
Yeah, the Mayor Parisi ordinance.
Good.
Yeah, just, in fact, they got smart and they started hanging them higher on poles because our inspectors couldn't rip them down anymore. So we simply took a more proactive approach and actually contacted some of the marketing companies that hang them, and we just think it litters the town.
Great.
So that's what we're asking the council approval for.
All right. Thank you.
So this ordinance will be advertised according to law to come up for second and final reading on April the 11th.
All right. We'll go back to resolutions.
Resolution C.
That was the first resolution pulled. Resolution C is a contract, professional service contract for Robert Candido for the township prosecutor. Councilman Krokovia, you called this resolution?
Yes, thank you. I was just trying to look at some of the financial background on this, and I wanted to talk about this just so I could get a little bit clearer. In our 2012 adopted budget, the compensation for this position was a little over $38,000, but the expended to date in 2012 was $51,000, which was 33% more than the budget. In 2013, it was the same budget amount, and we expended a little more than $64,000, so that was 67% over budget. In the 2014 introduced budget, it's, the budget is $61,440, which is a little less than what was spent last year, at least in terms of expended to date. And so I wanted to take a look at the contract. I asked for the previous contract, I don't think I got that. I asked if there were any changes in this contract from the last one, there was no answer, and I had asked for the contract.
This is the first contract?
This is the first contract.
So he's been working...
Per diem. Previously, this position was paid on per diem basis. So whenever sessions were, whenever sessions the court called for, we paid for based on that. And so one of the things that we looked, when I first came here the first year, I saw that there was a, quite a few more sessions than there had been historically. And so we talked to the court about that, and they indicated that because of various types of cases, particularly DWI cases and things that have to be heard, that there was an increase in demand. I didn't move the budget my next year because I wanted to see, you know, no more keeps from downward pressure on that, number one, and number two, just to see just really how it played out, and it turned out there was even more that year. So we had conversations with council to see whether or not there was something we could do, as we did with tax appeal council, to actually go into our contracts so that we could limit our exposure, no matter what, however many cases or whatever the caseload is, to a certain dollar amount. And that's what's happened here. We're looking, instead of somewhere in the mid-60s per year, which is or more, we're looking at a $52,000 annualized contract. This particular contract is just from this month, March forward, so whatever bills we have from January and February, we'll have to pay, and that, you know, we don't have, all the bills aren't in yet, so I can't tell you what the number's going to be. So the number that we have in the budget may, certainly I believe will be enough, it may be more than we need, but I can't really tell you at this point in time whether or not there'll be any room there. But clearly, from a contractual point of view, the number of $52,000 annualized is a marked improvement of what we paid over the past few years.
And I think you said that in the first couple of months of this year, the expenditure to date is a little over $19,000?
Oh, I don't think it was that high.
Okay.
I'll have to look and see, but I didn't think it was that high. I thought it was closer to $12,000, but I...
You're exactly right, I misread it. You're exactly right. You said $11,900.
But having said that, you know, we don't have a bill set yet, so necessarily, so I, you know, I don't know whether or not that is the number. Again, historically, that would be a low number for us, you know, on average over the past couple of years.
$11,900.
More than that, so I'm anticipating that there's more than...
Yes. And so what was the per diem and what's the financial implications between what was going on before and what's going to go on if this is approved going forward?
I don't remember off the top of my head what the per diem was. Can I provide that for you?
Yeah, Mr. Gross, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but it was 350 a court session. So, and this whole conversation is a credit to Mr. Tranque, the township attorney, who negotiated the same deals with the tax attorneys as Mr. Gross mentioned to lower our costs. We simply found, as Mr. Gross pointed out, our court sometimes meets a lot. So we were simply spending more than we had anticipated. So Mr. Tranque met with prosecutor and negotiated this deal, which is flat, we can predict what our costs are going to be going forward, and we'll lower the cost overall as well.
Okay. So I was a little confused because in the budget for this year, the budget is introduced, the amount is $61,440, but you're saying it's, it would be straight through, it'd be $52,000, but since we're only in the, you know, in the third month, actually almost starting the fourth month, that it would be even less than that. I'm just trying to get your best guess as to what our cost is going to be this year, our actual expenditure versus the budget.
I'll go over again. The amount that we have budgeted was a calculated number, it was less than what we spent last year to keep some downward pressure again in terms of when we were looking at a per diem rate. While we're going, while at the same time, we're going through the budget process, we're also working with council to negotiate some type of a flat rate. The flat rate is an annualized flat rate of $52,000. The contract that you see for you tonight is basically a 10-month contract, so it's not going to be $52,000, it's for, you know, 10/12ths of $52,000. So whatever, so that's going to be for the remainder of this year. Whatever the billings are, and again, so far, we've paid $12,000 a day for the first two months. I don't know what that's going to be. My sense is it's going to come in lower than what we budgeted. I can't give you the, you know, the numbers that you're looking for because we don't know yet what hasn't been built. Having said that, I feel confident that the amount that is budgeted will certainly cover, given the contract that we have, and there should be some savings in there.
Okay, thank you. It was just, I'm sorry, it was just really unclear to me, so thank you.
And he comes highly recommended from those over in the court system, so Mr. Candido comes highly recommended. I make a motion to approve Resolution 47-14. Okay.
So moved.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The resolution has been adopted.
Resolution G, also funding eminent tax appeals?
Yes, thanks, Council President. Again, I didn't understand the resolution here because I knew we had passed a similar resolution to borrow, this is, I'm sorry, this is a resolution to borrow money to pay for successful tax appeals. And I had just had asked a number of questions, because I didn't quite understand. I said, gee, we just passed a million-dollar authorization in January, why are we coming back with a million-five in March? And Mr. Gross clarified that it's not A plus B, it's a 50, or an increase from 1 million to 1 and 1/2 million.
If maybe if I can just...
Please do, please do.
This resolution does not authorize the borrowing of any funds to pay for tax appeals. What this resolution does, which is a housekeeping resolution, similar to, we've done these resolutions now, 2012, 2013, and now 2014. There's one at the beginning of the year, which basically allows us as tax appeals to fund them from other sources to be determined, other than fund balance. If we didn't have these in place, we have tax appeals that can fund balance, which means that would reduce our fund balance for the next year to apply for tax. So this reserves the council's right to some date in the future. The first resolution we did for a million dollars, if it was limited to the million dollars or something under that, the council would then have, at some point in time, we've been presenting the council with their options of either funding it through tax, through fund balance, or through some type of mechanism, funding through a refunding ordinance. In 2012, we didn't do a refunding ordinance because we didn't reach the level necessary in order to get it, so we actually ended up funding them through our surplus. In 2013, we did, and we've, when we've been talking about this, I'll say almost ad nauseam about trying to bring to conclusion many, many years of commercial appeals, to come to a conclusion over, over last year and this year, so that we can kind of clean the deck, if you will, and then move forward from there. Last year, we did 3.35 million dollars, this year, I suspect it'll be somewhere similar to that, I can't tell you whether it'll be more or less, but I certainly expect that the commercial appeals, which will, which should be the bulk of it, we're certainly not going to be all the commercial appeals, we're not going to be able to settle all of them, we'll get new ones, and these have a life of their own. But this resolution in particular, like resolutions in the past, is an, basically to amend the January 1st resolution as we see more and more cases coming in. We're now at the million-dollar threshold, so I've moved it up to the million and a half. We're not at a million and a half yet, but I'm pretty clear that we're going to get to a million and a half. Again, I think we, you know, I could have come back and said 2 million, because I'm pretty sure we're going to get there too, but in, you know, I think it's, in fairness, to try to do this incrementally with the council so that we, you get a sense of pacing of how these are coming in. But this is, again, this is a housekeeping resolution, it reserves the rights of the council to figure out at a later date how it wants to fund tax appeals, and these are only prior year tax bills, it's not current year tax bills, prior year tax bills. So, it's perfunctory in nature, it's important because it does, it does give you the ability to make decisions later on that you wouldn't otherwise be able to make.
Okay. I just wanted to catch something there, because I didn't, I wasn't aware of this before. You said last year, we borrowed the 3 and 1/3 million, you said you expect about the same amount that you need to borrow this year?
I would suspect that we may approach that. I mean, we, you know, when we started this process back in 2012, and when we told council, we told the council that you should expect, at that point in time, we were estimating about $5 million in commercial appeals. Those have grown, you know, and they, you know, as time goes on, they will grow, you get new appeals coming in, but, so to the extent that, you know, this year, you know, I would not find it unusual to hit that number. I'm not predicting that we're hitting that number, but I think council should be prepared to understand that, you know, this, these are big numbers that we've been dealing with and dealing with historically, we've pushed it off, and now we're trying to get it cleaned up over this couple of year period, so that moving forward, we can have a more even impact on the tax base as we go through tax appeals. So, I hope it isn't that high.
Oh, okay, okay, well, I'm sure we, I'm sure we all join you in that.
But at the same time, if we need to get there in order to clear the decks, that makes it better for the taxpayers moving forward, then that, perhaps that's what we need to do. And we'll be coming back to you with that.
Okay. So, you helpfully provided our sort of history of this, because what's important, I think, to understand is that we have a very, relatively short payback period for these amounts. We borrow it, and then we, according to whatever the state tells us, is, I think it's three, four, five years.
Yeah, I mean, the law gives you three to seven years. The local finance board has been tightening the reins, if you will. Last year, we got four years, the previous one, we had five years. You know, it really is a matter of the dollar amounts and the impact on the taxpayers. Just as a side note, the local finance board expects municipalities to raise taxes to pay for tax bills as much as $50 a taxpayer, and will not approve funding until you reach that, until you reach that, that the payback costs you, costs the taxpayers. So, there is, I'll say, direction.
John, Mr. Gross, just, I don't want to interrupt you, I want you to repeat that because, you know, you and I have talked about this. The state is saying you can't bond tax appeals unless you have to raise taxes more than $50, $50. So, understand what Mr. Gross just said, I want the public to understand it. The state is basically telling us, you've got to raise taxes more than $50 before you can pay tax bills. So, these are some of the issues that we're up against administratively. You can't stop people from filing tax appeals, it's their right to do so. We have to deal with them. And again, we have to deal with them for the school board and county, and the state is basically saying, raise taxes on residents.
$50 per average taxpayer. And then, and in fact, when you do the financing, the financing is geared around that to be at, you know, at least, not, not, not under, but at least $50 per taxpayer increase. So, to the extent that, for instance, this year, we're not increasing taxes, we have reduced other expenses in order to cover them, so, because we've come in flat, so.
So, in 2009, we borrowed about 2 and 1/3 million, and we have to pay it off over five years, and I think we've only got, if I understand your email...
It's the last payment.
Last payment, $465,000 this year.
This year's last payment.
Okay. And so then last year, we borrowed 3 and 1/3, again, it looks like the local finance board gave us four years?
Four years.
So, that's $837,000 a year, and we make our first payment this year?
That $837,000 is in this year's budget that came in flat. So, we ate, and we found $837,000.
So, if we borrow money this year, under this authorization that we're giving you, that will not impact this year's budget, because you don't start paying it until the next year, is that correct?
Just to be clear, this is not an authorization to borrow the money, but when, we do present that to you, and if you agree at that point in time to do so, it would not impact this year's budget, it would impact future year's budget. Now, for instance, this year, if we brought before you a package that would end up being a payback of $465,000, that would have no impact because we're losing a payment of $465,000 this year, so the next year, that would make that up. So, there is some, the whole, the whole concept here is that there's some light at the end of the tunnel to try to do this, which is, which is a big feat to clear up 5 to 6 million dollars worth of commercial tax appeals without having a negative impact on the taxpayer. It's a huge feat, and, you know, and I have to, I appreciate the council, the work the council has done with this, and the tech, and staff as well, to bring this to fruition, because this is really a big deal.
I agree.
You know, I think it is, it's a really a big deal, it's a big deal to accomplish what's been done here. And, you know, in my career, which has been, you know, well over 25 years, this is, I've not, you don't see this often, and, you know, usually, this kind of result is, you don't, you don't, you don't see. So, I think it's worth, it's commendable to council and to staff that worked on this, everybody involved.
So, how is, how is our separate budget item, we budget $600,000 for tax appeals? Last year, we budgeted $600,000, even though we had more tax appeals, we didn't spend all that, correct?
Well, again, you know, it's not mixed apples and oranges, that is for, those funds are for current year appeals. Everything we're talking about right now is prior year appeals.
Okay.
Current year appeals is a whole different animal, and, you know, that's based on the county boards, and they're usually resolved in the same year, they don't carry on year after year after year like commercial appeals do. Generally, well, there is some, you know, obviously, there are some large homes that do get into that, get into tax work, and can go on year to year, but certainly not as long as, as, um, commercial appeals. But what we use those funds for, that we put aside, is primarily for the appeal and the represent, the cost of defending appeals. So, that, look in your budget, you know, we, for tax appeals, we budget a line and we minus that out against tax appeal, the reserve for tax appeals, because we're financing that through that, the reserve. And sometimes, sometimes we need it, and sometimes, years, I hope that we, hopefully someday, we can start to reduce that reserve, or at least reduce, reduce the contribution of that reserve. Right now, we're not at that point.
Okay. Thank you, that's all I have.
You're welcome, thank you. Thank you for your forward-thinking approach. And I make a motion to approve, adopt Resolution 51-14.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Aye.
Okay, the resolution has been adopted.
Resolution I, was the resolution authorizing the agreement with the Emergency Communication Network for Automatic Emergency Notification System.
Council President?
Please.
I can speak on that?
Sure.
Yeah, what we, we all refer to as the reverse 911 system, that's what it was kind of created for when the, when the technology first developed, probably 10, 11 years ago, 12 years ago maybe even at this point. It's grown to much more than that, however, the, there's different levels, not only of contract, but of what Verizon will allow you to use the lines for, because keep in mind, the computer technology is advanced, but it still relies on Verizon to access the phone numbers and to call the phone numbers quickly. Just for, I guess, public edification, this is the system in which we can call residents with a recorded message. What we have found, and especially in light of the new company that I guess acquired or took over, the company that had managed it for years, is there are different levels of contract that relate to what Verizon will let you use the phone for. So, though it's important to be able to communicate with the residents, the system calls every resident in town, I think within like three hours, I mean, it's really very quick, might even be less than that now. It says you can't use it if it's not emergency. So, it's clear, you know, when there's a massive snowstorm, or God forbid, a hurricane, or something of urgent, water main breaks in a neighborhood, sometimes it will fall that neighborhood. There are other things we think it serves a practical use for, but we found that the contract didn't allow us to do that. So, to have a general announcement that impacts a neighborhood that doesn't necessarily qualify as an emergency, you can't use the system. So, we simply, after meeting with the company, reviewing the contract, the input from Kenny and the legal department, we said we had to amend the contract because we want the flexibility to use the system, look, not to, not to promote, you know, some event, this isn't a promotional thing, but to even notify the public of things that they would want to know, but doesn't necessarily qualify as emergency, we had to amend the contract. So, that's what this is asking for, we're asking the council to amend the contract so we can use the system to communicate when we think it's appropriate, but even in circumstances that might not rise to the level of emergency. And, and look, we would never abuse it, Lord knows, we hear from the public, sometimes that, sometimes they get too many calls as it is, but any means that you can communicate with the public should be at our disposal. And unfortunately, issues that neighborhoods or residents might want to know and might need to know, might not rise to the level of emergency. So, this simply gives us the flexibility to notify and utilize the system, even if it's not classified as a true emergency.
No, I'm trying to think what that would apply to. I'm thinking over the summer, there were so many water main breaks, people were coming home and not finding water. Is that an emergency, what?
A perfect example is a road closure. It doesn't rise to the level of emergency, but if there's a road closure in a neighborhood, you know, because of the parade, or because of the downtown run, you got to notify the neighborhood.
You need to know, right.
So, I don't want to say it's a little glitch that developed, but it was a little glitch that developed in interpreting the contract, and maybe this new vendor is maybe a little more particular, I don't really know, but bottom line is, we have to be careful and make sure we're doing things legally, but at the same time, you need the mechanism to notify the residents on the important issue.
Councilwoman Serrano?
Yeah, you were asking for an example, Council President, and you remember, it was the last meeting or the meeting before, we're talking about snow, and about notifying neighborhoods in case there will be, were you here, Mayor?
There'd be snowfall.
Snow removal.
Perfect example, Council, you're absolutely right. And that was the example that came up. We wanted to notify a neighborhood that we were going to be moving snow.
Sure.
And the vendor said, that's not really an emergency.
So, see, the public now can...
Another perfect example, thank you, Mr. Sayers, the plastic bags in the recycling, which has been a big issue. We wanted to use, utilize the system to ask residents not to put the plastic bags in the co-mingle recycling, and we simply, we were kind of refused that option. So, not to abuse the system, but certainly important public announcements that don't rise to the level of emergency, we need to amend the contract in order to do that, and we're asking the council for consideration.
Okay, good, Council President. The reason I pulled this was because there's been a significant increase in this cost. 2012, 2013, we paid a little over, we've paid less than $9,000 for, for the service, and we're using it. If I understand, if I recall my conversation with Mr. Gross at the December meeting, we've been using it for both emergency and non-emergency. Then, there was an acquisition, we moved to a better, more flexible software platform, and so that cost almost doubled for the emergency to $16,000. And now, this is being presented as an amendment that's going to increase another $27,500. So, we've basically gone from our 2013 expense to the proposed today, about five, we've gone like five times what we were spending, and what I wanted to try to get...
It's not 27.50 more.
This, it's a fixed cost of 27...
27.5 is total.
Oh.
That's not more.
I am...
It's not additional.
You know, this is not the first, this is not the first resolution that I have not found clear, so let's make sure...
It went from 16 to 27.
Right.
16 to 27.5, okay. And...
Not on top of the 6, not 27.5 on top of 16.
Okay, okay.
Let me just read the sentence, "The agreement for a maximum term will ensure that the township maintains the fixed cost of $27,000 per year."
No, I understand, I read that, but when I interpreted that, I thought it was just talking about the non-emergency service, so that's why, you can see why I was very concerned about that. So, instead of going up five times, it's only gone up for, three times, roughly.
Three times over what was paid historically for, for, for a system that is not, not as, not as flexible, that is not, not in this day and age from a technology point of view, up to the standard, and frankly, doesn't exist anywhere. And the most important part of it, it was a contract that was negotiated many years ago, at a fixed rate for over a period of, I think, five years, and that company no longer exists, they were bought out, they didn't really merge with another company, they were actually bought out, they bought their business book, basically, and that company no longer exists, and nobody else is giving, is giving those types of prices that we saw back then, that's just not out there that we've seen at this point in time. That's not to say that that won't return, this is an ever-evolving market, you know, we see in this, this type of area, prices starting to drop, and so, one of the things that we've reluctant, we've been reluctant to do, which some of the vendors wanted to do, is get us into a multi-year contract. We want to look at this on an annualized basis, so that we can, we can take advantage of advances in technology as it progresses. So, we'll be visiting this again in September and evaluating what the market is, who's out there, and what the pricings are, and what we can get, the value we can get for our money at that point in time. And we tend to do that on an annual basis, because, again, because it is such an ever-changing market, it's important, I think, that we do that.
Okay. In the December meeting, you and I had this sort of discussion about what happens on the non-emergency, and you said you were looking at other, at other options. And I just wanted to make sure that we are making the best decision that we can at this time, and I know you were saying you were doing some research, but I didn't see a spreadsheet or anything like that, I don't think we went out for any sort of bids or proposals.
We did, we looked out, we went out for quotes, and then also, you know, historically, from my knowledge base, you know, I looked at the numbers, you know, for instance, where I was before, paid an extra $12,000 for this component, so this one's at 11.5. So, it's in, it's in the realm of what I, my knowledge, what the rate numbers are. We've had, we've had other quotes that were higher, some that might have been a little bit lower, but there were, again, there were three-year quotes, so they, you know, they weren't necessarily, they weren't compelling, if you will. So, I think that the value is here, and again, we're looking for, basically, this is a, now that we know the product, we're looking for, to finish out this year, and then we'll, again, on an annual basis, we're going to be looking at this to, to make sure that we're following the technology and not getting beat by the technology.
Okay. So, just to make sure I understand correctly, because obviously, I don't understand everything about this. You went out and looked at non-emergency services in the last couple of months, or is that when they did, or are you talking about...
We went to other vendors to get quotes, if we were going to be using two vendors, let's say. A vendor we have the contract with, and another one, how much would the other vendor call the charges?
Okay. So, you went out there in the last month or two, and that's, so you've got a real market rate, okay? Okay, that's all the questions I had, thank you.
Okay, so I make a motion to approve Resolution 53-14, authorizing agreement with ECN for to add the non-emergency system. Is there a second? Thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the resolution has been adopted.
Okay, and our last resolution is on the reconstruction of the outdoor waiting pool at the Jenny Duncan Pool. Glad to see our directors are still here. Did you want to make another comment now, or they were here, they heard the comments, you can, okay, good, thank you. Thank you. Because now we have a whole package. Over, under, we. All right.
Second half?
March Madness, no more metaphors on, who's on the bench? Who's on deck? Nice save. And we're talking about the town pool, right? This is, how would you like to start?
Well, I'm just going to start. I think you're all familiar with the pool.
Mm-hmm.
Which shows at home and water. It's part of the Colgate Field Complex. The Colgate Field being at the intersection of Franklin Avenue and Cherry Street, and the pool being located to the north of it off of Cherry Street. What we're proposing to do is converting the waiting pool into a combination of a spray pad and a waiting pool. If you see this, this is our main pool, our dining tank, and our waiting pool is located just to the east and south of our main pool. And just so you know, this is, this is what it looks like today, in plan. This was a survey that we had performed of the pool last February, Saturday morning, of course, in the snow. So this is the existing waiting pool, and we're going to convert it into a combination, as I said, of a waiting pool, which will remain, and extend it in addition off, as you see, to the left, which would be, which would be the spray pad. And within that spray pad, there'd be five water toys, and there'd be a sixth toy that would remain in the middle of the existing waiting pool. What the purpose of this design was, was to still try and keep an area or to maintain an area for infants and toddlers that they can enjoy the water without necessarily being geared by somewhat older children who are enjoying the spray pad. So this was a project that was prepared by a company in Pennsylvania, Integrated Aquatic Engineering of Doylestown. They prepared this plan, and subsequent from the plan and the technical specs, we put together a document for this project. And tonight we're asking you to recommend an award to our bidder, which is Silk Repel Industries out of Neptune, New Jersey. And what I indicated is, you know, $7,000.
Of which, how much is grant money?
Of that, $150,000 would be grant money. The spray toys are not, although they're installed by this contractor, they're being purchased by the recreation department as an understate contract.
Councilman Schrill.
Yeah, Council President, before I ask my question, I do want to say that I'm impressed with the survey in 2013 and the response. Number one, it seems that a lot of people happy with the discovery, the way it's structured. Professionalism, pool experience, really high numbers. Satisfaction with the gate attendance, fifty-six. Excellent. Just want to commend you for, for a good job. My question, Len, and I guess this goes back to what the mayor said, you know, sometimes we don't, it's difficult to pay attention to specifics because there's so much on someone's plate. And I know that independent cost estimate initially was a little bit different than what the bids came out to, and that happens, that tends to happen if the, if the specs aren't as specific. Sometimes, you know, the results of the open bidding process could be a little bit, a little bit off. So could you just talk a little bit about that? And I know that it was because the specs weren't as.
Well, let me, and I'll ask Bill for some assistance. The original estimate actually came from Integrated Aquatics, it was building the design, so.
Yeah, but Lenny, excuse me, and look, you must do a lot of the.
Sure, sure.
We can all make the best guess. The market drives costs. You know, so it's, it happens sometimes. We all think, sometimes it comes in under budget, sometimes it's over budget. So you could say we were wrong, and certainly the professionals we relied on were wrong, but when the, when the bids were all kind of right in that same area, that's what the market is. So sometimes what we've seen, especially with the down economy, we were able to get certain contracting services pretty cheap three years ago because everyone was aggressive. Maybe now they're not, but it's, you know, sometimes it's just, I don't want to say a stab in the dark, but it's a stab in the dark. You know, until you really get the spec in professionals' hands and they crunch the numbers, but when you see everyone pretty close, then you know that we were just wrong. Sometimes, we've seen here, one guy's at 300 and everyone else is at 600, so that means something's wrong. You know, but everyone was kind of close here. So it's unfortunate, we guessed wrong. We did rely on the professional who does this kind of service for a living, and he didn't maybe help us out as best we want, but at the end of the day, the market drives costs. So that's why, that's why you publicly bid, that's why you bid.
Are you retaining the same A and E for the project?
No, we're going to make sure that we manage it.
In-house?
In-house.
Oh, that's great. That's great, you're going to save a cost for the project.
You know, that this designer did is, and I mentioned this in my letter, in an attempt to help reduce some of the costs, he was salvaging half of the existing waiting pool where he wasn't going to reconstruct that. He would have us, or contractors, saw cut the concrete, built the spray pad on one side, joined the spray pad into the existing waiting pool, and then refinish the surfaces on both the new spray pad and the existing waiting pool. I put it into bid as an alternate, just to see what some of the costs would be, just to completely reconstruct it so we wouldn't have to worry about a joint in that. But the prices came in a little bit higher, but one of the things we need today is we know there's a contractor, he can actually come lower on the price to rebuild than what his bid price was. In fact, I thought it was a little higher, at 40,000, it's now down to 30,000, but that's not reflected in the $227,000. Just maybe a bit more competitive pricing out of him to rebuild more.
Can you talk a little bit about the alternate and what your vision was for including that? Was it to get a different perspective, you did a different, a different type of.
Well, I put that alternate in because I didn't necessarily feel comfortable with the fact that in an effort to economize, that maybe you just don't end up with the best alternative solution to, you know, a waiting pool that we're going to expect to have here, you know, 20, 30, 40 years from now, after all, this waiting pool is 50 years old this year. Bill may elaborate a little before that, this is the 50th anniversary of the Jenny Dunker Service.
Right.
So that's why I put it in as an alternate. When the prices initially came in, I thought it was a bit too high. Like I said, today, I think the contractors will lay to it more competitive with that alternate. I think that's something we discussed, but not something I intended in my letter.
Okay, all right. Because he has it in a zero, that alternate one.
That alternate was something that came up to request, you know, Jimmy Latour, who's our pool operator, he was putting tile at the initial entry point. One of the things I should point out is when you enter the spray pad, as you look at this going from left to right, this portion, the spray pad, is actually at grade, you don't step down into it, it's really ADA compliant, as is getting into the facility. Then as you progress from left to right, you do get into slightly deeper water, I think at the deepest of the waiting pool, the 16 inches. But it does start at zero, and what he was proposing, what our consultant was proposing to do is put tile there, and even though it was non-slip tile, we thought that as an alternate, we should request plaster, which would be what the rest of the pool surface would be.
And they'll do it.
And they'll do it, and there's no charge, even though sometimes the plaster can get a little bit more expensive than the tile, although not everybody necessarily did that.
Council President.
Okay. Was Allstate Technology competitive?
Allstate Technology was the lowest bidder, but they were not responsive in the fact that they left a subcontractor, they specifically left a plumbing subcontractor off. You do need a plumber to do the plumbing work here. I checked this with Tom Tracy, our construction code official. So the two subcode specialties that you need here are both a licensed electrician and a licensed plumber. And the three that were both specified, those two subcontractors, Allstate did not, and that's a non-responsive bid under part.
Okay. It was noted in the spec that a licensed plumber needed to be noted in the submittal of the bidding document?
What's noted in the spec is that you have to list subcontractors. And the subcontractors that are.
They didn't have a license.
The two specialties are plumbers and electricians, they do not employ plumbers and electricians.
A licensed plumber, right, okay.
And they do not use one as a subcontractor.
Okay, I know a member of the public mentioned something, that we should vote against the splash pad because it would result in additional volume. I don't understand that. Why, don't we want to increase the volume of the pool?
It should be. It should be?
Yeah.
Family, I mean, there should be more members joining.
That's been a stated goal.
What's that?
That's been a stated goal, was to get more people to come back.
To get more people to come, increase membership.
And to the extent that, and to the extent that you increase membership and membership fees, it certainly will help offset whatever the cost would be.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I guess that the issue is more of like, it has to do with restructuring the, restructuring the type of plans that are being offered. Probably has to do along those lines, rather than us seeing that we improve revenue via the improvement of the service. I will, I will talk to the member of the public privately. Thank you for answering this question.
Council McGrino.
All right. Thank you, Council President. Mr. LaFleur, in all these specs and the construction, are all considerations being built in to additional, you know, water flow and everything else that can our current pool filtration system handle what we currently have?
That was all examined by our consultant. Actually, it's a whole new filtration system for the waiting pool and spray pad, it's a whole new pump system. Certainly, the pumps that are there now aren't sufficient to act, to keep all these spray toys running, so it's a completely different pump system, it's a different filtration system, all the underground piping, all which feeds to the, to the individual spray toys.
I don't see any, is there any landscaping cost in here, any lighting?
I think these are some of the things that, some of the landscaping that we would do, we would do this all in-house with our personnel. We're really looking for this contractor to come in, demo what needs to be demoed, build this pool, put the piping in the ground, the new filtration and pump system, and have, and set it to the spray toys that we buy.
Are there any conditions in place that, when he does this construction, if has any impact on our current pool system?
Well, we're pretty sure we know where most of the piping is, but I think there's always the possibility that we may find that there's some pipes that are running where we don't expect them to be, and those would have to be dealt with at the time. That's not necessarily in the spec, it's something that we would have to do just on a time and material, but I don't think we're going to find that, but just from some past projects, I think.
It'll be part of your checklist. Let me ask this question. Have you seen and visited other pools that have this type of splash?
I personally have not, no.
Okay. Okay, may I ask the rec, record question, or do I have to wait till?
Of course.
Oh. All right. Actually, Mr. LaFleur, before you leave, when do you anticipate, if this was voted on tonight, when do you anticipate this being in service?
Um, we're.
I know Bill's very optimistic.
Or mid to late May. I've got the contractor today, and he's ready to mobilize probably the week of April, December.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. LaFleur. Mr. Keo, any analysis you've done that would show what increase this would generate for the town pool?
That's a good question. Only in that the trend that we're seeing now is that municipal pools are following the private sector competition line. In other words, the competition line out there with Great Adventure and things like that, is more interactive toys, this is what people are running to on day trips and all that. And you're starting to see municipal pools, starting about two, three years ago, we're starting to put these things in here as a way of really competing with the private sector. I personally went down and saw Dorbrook, Dorbrook Facility, which is in Colts Neck, and it was just jam-packed with moms and young kids, and it's run by the Monmouth County Park System. It's not part of a municipal pool, it's a freestanding facility, but it was really amazing to see the kids. I mean, from the ages of, you know, six months to about 11 or so, 12, they were really having a ball.
Okay. My question to you though, too, what kind of limits are you restricted to when you have a spray facility like this? Like, how many children can be in that facility at one time?
Well, one of the things that our spray pad does is it, if you remember, a couple years ago, we talked about Dagnan Park's Kitty Park and how it flowed from older to younger as you, as you move from one section to the other. The spray pad is set up the same way. As you start at the Kitty Park, the Kitty Pool section of it, it's really geared toward younger kids, and the more challenging water features are farther away from where the little kids would be, closer to the parking lot. So we're hoping that there'll be a little bit of a flow there, we won't have big kids knocking over little kids. But we'll have a guard there, you know, to monitor, to monitor flow, make sure they're not running and pushing and all that stuff.
Will there be accessibility for the parents to be within that area?
Yeah, there'll be benches right around there. That was another thing that we noticed, too, at Dorbrook, is a lot of parents like to be kind of sitting there and keeping an eye on it, you know?
Right. And it's not going to cost you an additional guard with this new facility?
I don't think so. Maybe on a real busy day it may, but you know, on a real, real busy day, sometimes you need more guards in the main pool, too. So, depends on the numbers.
Thank you, Mr. LaFleur. Thank you, Council President.
Any other questions?
Yes, I have some questions. First off, I want to say I thank you for all of this material that you provided to us today, but a lot of it, we really, really could have used last council meeting, we were talking about the membership material, and there was no one from the rec department here, and there was no, the business administrator wasn't here either. So I think this material is really good, but a lot of it is just, is late because we decided on the membership stuff last week, and I just, I think that's most unfortunate. I wanted to just first start to look at the costs here, and I'm not sure whether you can provide it, or maybe Mr. Gross, but the contract is for 200, almost $228,000 to do the construction. Then there's another $19,000 and change for the toys, that's also a cost. We authorized last year, design work of $12,800, and there's been work done on the site to take out various stuff around there, and I think that's done from a separate account. Wasn't it, Mr. Gross? I think you and I may have corresponded on this last year.
Any, any work that's, my understanding, work that's been done, has been done internally, not through.
That's correct.
So it would be through our staff.
Yeah, I thought you had sent me an email that said there was a separate account that was an existing account that we were using the funds for. I just want to know what that number is that we've expended so far, because.
The numbers that I gave you today are the only numbers, external numbers that we've expended. Obviously, if staff was involved.
Right.
That's paid out of their budgets. So I mean, there's no, there was no additional cost or, other than what I sent you today.
I'll, I'll try to find that email then, then. Okay, so thank you. So on the specs, there's, there's a description of a wall that's to be built. It looks like it's about 18 inches high and about 50 feet long, that, this is on the building specs, that's going to be built, but it's going to be done by a separate vendor, at least that's what the specs indicate? Is there any estimate as to how much that's going to cost?
That wall, again, we're going to do that wall in-house, and we're going to do it once we know just how the grades work there. I would expect the materials for that, most maybe about $2,500.
And then the project management's also going to be done in-house? Any estimate of how much that's going to be?
I don't have an in-house estimate for that, no I don't.
Okay. Okay. So, it is going to cost a lot more than $227,000. The numbers I've got here is over $260,000.
You would have the 227, plus the almost $20,000 for the spray toys. The costs to date are, like you said, about $12,000, plus the wall would be, I guess what, like you said, those are $260,000.
Okay. Could you talk a little bit about what's going to be the impact on the surrounding area of the pool? Because the, the existing waiting pool is much smaller than the larger, the new pool that's being proposed, and it looks like it's going to take up a lot more of the footprint of that area in terms of, there's a number of tables and umbrellas that were there before that do not look like they're going to be here now.
I'll have Bill come up.
Okay.
The, the wall that separated the upper pool from the lower pool, all those hedges are gone, all that's graded out, so where the hedges were, there's now going to be tables. So, we haven't, we're moving the tables from those central locations more toward the wall, and we're going to put a little railing up there, you know, just for safety purposes. But if we lose, I think we're talking about seven tables or so that are all being relocated, is my understanding. That question was asked today.
Okay, so you're not losing any tables?
If we are, it's one, maybe, but I don't think it's going to be.
Okay. I didn't see on the schematics that there were any benches on the, I guess, the side closest to the entrance to the pool.
Some of the, some of the benches that are there maybe get popped and moved around, but we're hoping, if we, we don't think we have to buy anymore, but if we do, it'll be a minimum of one or two, maybe.
So it won't be, it won't be a decline in the number of benches where people can sit and watch their kids?
Oh, no, 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 no. We're going to try to carefully excavate them and reinstall them.
Okay.
Most of the, most of the time, that works. And, and to your question before about the, the $20,000 for the toys, that, that has no impact on taxes, that was a donation.
I'm sorry, what was that?
The $20,000 for the spray toys was a donation.
So somebody has donated that?
The Colgate Fund donated that.
Oh, that's good to know.
I swear.
So what's the age group that you're targeting with this new facility? Because I heard mention of infants and toddlers, and I'm a little concerned about...
Well, see, here's the difference between a spray pad and a, and a straight waiting pool. Straight waiting pool, you set a toddler down, the toddler can slide, go underwater. In a waiting, in a, in a spray pad, it's flat. You could set a toddler down, you could sit next to your toddler there, and the child's not going to slide under the water. So, you're going to be able to have kids a little bit younger interacting in a spray pad than you would in a straight waiting pool. And then, of course, generally speaking, once they get about six or so, they don't want to play in the waiting pool anymore. But the, part of the spray pad that extends closest to the parking lot, we think it's going to be a little bit fun for kids that are, you know, eight, nine, 10. So that's kind of like our, our average group, we think, maybe 10 years old down to toddlers.
So, the, the waiting pool as it stands now, or at least last season, had an age restriction on, I think it was, I don't know, four or five?
Yeah.
And so, now we're going to have 10-year-olds running around?
At their end, at their end. They'll be shooting back to their end.
Is there any barrier between the two?
There'll be a human barrier. The staff will be taking care of that. And, you know, and again, it's, it's a growth process, you know? We've got to see how the kids react, and, you know, we'll make sure nobody's getting knocked around.
What's the, is there a capacity for this? I didn't see anything on the specs.
No, not really, not really. I mean, it's a common, a common sense capacity.
Of course.
If I may ask a question, Council?
Yeah, I, no more questions.
Thank you, Councilman.
May I have a few more?
Mr. Keo, what is the, what is the total capacity of the pool as it currently exists?
You mean, what's the maximum number of people who can be in the pool complex at one time?
Within legal, within legal? Right. What the fire, what the fire department code is?
2,500.
2,500? Okay.
That includes the grounds, right. Now, I think it's been probably about 2,500 years ago since we had to stop people at the door because we got to that number, so...
Just a, just a question, understand the capacity?
Even when the whole Keo family was there?
Yeah, we were all there, we were all there.
The whole Keo family. Thanks.
And I want to, I have a follow-up question to that point. If the overall amount of people is 2,500, what do you average as far as staff? What do you plan for? Is it half of that? Is it 75% of that? And this goes back to my comment that was, I think, misunderstood, which was that if you had a daily pass, okay, you, it would be an unpredictable situation because you wouldn't know how much staff is going to show up. One day is going to be a sunny day, another day is going to be a cloudy day, nobody's going to show up, yet you, you have staffing for 2,500 people. Well, I'm not trying to be exclusive, but what I was trying to say is, from an economic perspective, I was trying to make people understand that that builds a level of unpredictability and difficult budgeting. That was my point, and I think it was misinterpreted, but...
Well, those, I mean, you know, we're talking about a spray pad, not our membership packages, but, you know, just to answer your question, we staff based on, on a full day. Now, we, we obviously have enough common sense to realize what the busy days are and what the slow days are. You know, you get a sunny Sunday, you're going to get more people than you're going to get on a sunny Wednesday. But what you do is, you staff full, and then you roll back. Okay, so if all of a sudden, you know, it gets to be 2:00 and it's overcast, you know, you say to a couple of guards, "Anybody want to go home early today?", you start knocking people off, you know what I mean, to be smart?
Like the restaurant.
We get certain guys out of there right away, and...
Just like the restaurant.
Just like the restaurant, send one of them waitresses home, right.
Only they're not going to cost the money, the guys in the back.
I will.
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Mr. Keo.
Okay, now that we have Tim here, would you like to make any comments? Ask any questions?
Thank you, Claire Silvestri, 20 Grand Avenue, again. Thanks, a lot of the questions that were asked were answers, you've given answers to my questions. I do have concerns in looking at the layout, and this idea of having, in one, in one place, toddler stuff, baby, baby splash pad, and 10-year-old splash pad. I, I'm a real veteran of, I could tell you, I've been to Water Country, I've been to Disney, both of them, Hurricane Harbor, even King's Dominion, so I know all about splash pads, much larger, I'll say. But they usually keep, you know, five-year-olds, toddlers, separate from kids who are in second, third, fourth grade. And I'm trying to get an idea of, you know, I'm, I'm very familiar with the pool. I'm looking at this, and I anticipated that you're taking out about six to eight tables by putting in the smaller, the older splash pad area. But I guess you're saying that you've pulled out the hedges along the wall, and that table will fit there? Because quite honestly, those tables where the new splash pad is proposed to be are the tables that are most popular, most used, because parents can see their kids either, you know, in the, in the regular pool. Once they go, "I don't have a problem with that anymore, I used to be up top, but because my kid's older, I go down low", but you're pretty much taking all of these out. And the other thing was, I was looking at, you know, this whole idea of the grading of the, of the, of the pool, and I did notice that it, it does, you know, it usually does go shallowest to deepest in, in, you know, in the center of the, of the pool, but I noticed that it's like one, one depth in the old part of the pool, different depth in the newer part, and it's even deeper in the middle. And, and just as a veteran of this with kids, I know, especially the babies, you know, if you start changing the slope and everything, that's difficult for them to stand up. So, I, I just, you know, I, I, can you give me, I know that the, the other thing that I see is this 18-inch wall, virtually, you know, within, I guess, about two or three feet from the edge of the deck on the older child's area. I also have concerns, I've, I'm looking at the toys, you're going to be hard-pressed to find toddlers who aren't going to want to be on the older part area. But I also see this, this wall, and it says it's 18 inches. I measured that, that's up to, a little, up to my knee. A kid can walk off that, and boom, you know, they can fall off, and a young child could be, could be hurt by that. So I just have all of these concerns about putting this together. You know, splash pads are great, and kids do love them, but, you know, I'm just afraid that this is being shoehorned into a space, trying to serve too many audiences at the same time, and it, and it could be. I also noticed the benches that exist now are around the, the wider part, the old, the existing part, but as was pointed out, there are no benches around the, the deck of the larger part. And I, quite honestly, the lifeguards aren't going to be able, the lifeguards sit on the deck, on the benches now, there's going to be no place, are they going to stand the whole time that they are supervising the, the newer part, the older child part of the, of the splash pad? I, I, I truly have, have genuine concerns about how this is all going to work with the various age ranges. You know that the older kids are going to want to be there, they're, I've seen it, they run over the younger kids. And, and one other question that I had, in terms of, I'm trying to, can you give us an idea of, in terms of, say, here in the council chamber, how big this all will be from one end to another? And the final comment that I had is, question I have is, actually, two. When you went out, originally last year, the, the bid was, the, I guess the designer gave you an estimate of $120,000, soup to nuts, and then it comes in at double that. And I just wonder, this whole, and the, the intersection of the county grant, was, were you aware that it was going to be double when, before you put in for the county grant? Or when you put in for the county grant, was it expected that the county grant would pay for the vast majority of this? And, and just to confirm, this is not going to be the, the construction cost, the 227, is it not going to be built into any of the pool fees? This is going to actually be paid by the capital budget, you know, bonding from the taxpayers. If you could confirm that, too. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, gentlemen. Any other questions? Do you have questions?
Sue Freeball, 10 Ridgewell Avenue. My overall question is, is actually pretty simple, is where's the evidence this will actually increase revenue? I mean, it's one thing to go to Splash Park and see there are a lot of people there, it's another thing to say the addition of the Splash Park brought in extra revenue, and there's been no evidence showing anything other than we hope it will and we think it will. And at double the price, it's going to need to be twice as worth it to install. And it's one thing to simply say, gee, we paid someone, they gave us an estimate, it came in too high, market forces. I'm sorry, if something comes in double what I expect to pay for it, I'm going to stop and think about whether or not it's worth paying for, if it's double what I thought it would cost. So, there needs to be, I mean, by my estimates based on what Mr. Gross said, you know, last year, over $25,000 in extra just to make it worth it. You know, even with the grant, the grant is paid for by tax money, it's all paid for by our tax money, except apparently for $19,000 in water toys. So, if it's not going to increase revenue, as fun as it might be, it's really not going to serve its purpose.
Thank you.
I just have a few comments, I don't think Council's done.
Go right ahead.
Just a few thoughts.
Excuse me, if I, I'm sorry, I apologize for interrupting you, but we had two people ask questions, and are they even going to be responded to?
Well, I was going to respond to a few.
Okay, I apologize.
Some of the technical things, Bill and I have to respond to. And I don't have the...
Necessary.
I just didn't think they were...
Not necessary, okay.
...privilege of having been here last meeting, so I don't want to say something that may be, is contrary to what another member of the administration said. But, but I'll say, from my perspective as a taxpayer, and as a resident, and as a longtime pool member, when my kids were little, we were there fairly regularly, it's, it's not, and I guess this goes back to what I said earlier, it's not my objective that this drives membership. And, though it's always a nice thing, what I have found over the years, and sitting in your roles for, for many years, the pool was often a point of frustration because the numbers never seemed to jive. So, I personally accepted a philosophy years ago that the pool is a great amenity, it's maybe not likely to always cover its cost, but if you accept the philosophy that we're going to have a town pool, you need to have a good town pool. I don't think it's realistic, in this day and age, to think that a municipal council would approve the millions of dollars it would cost to build a pool. So I think we should be grateful that we have it. But I certainly equate something like this to what I've seen in my own kids, and we've all seen in our own kids. They're not entertained the way we used to be entertained. You know, we used to go to park and roll around a ball and have a great time for eight hours with no cell phones. You know, so, kids today are different. So, I don't know that this, it certainly wasn't my thought when Bill first mentioned it, even had conversations with the council president about it. It wasn't my thought that, wow, this is really going to drive membership. This is going to, could keep us competitive, because where my kids used to maybe be happy in the waiting pool, kids today maybe aren't. You know, you need to, you need to keep competitive. So, I don't know that this was ever a goal to drive up membership as much as it was to keep our pool competitive. Bill mentioned the private entertainment facilities, they're pretty sophisticated. We're never going to get there, but you need to make it attractive. So, I apologize if, if we've created the impression that a primary function was to drive membership. It wasn't. It was to keep our pool attractive. We've made improvements to the pool over the years, and I can't remember all of them, but they're an investment to keep it competitive. And I suspect that 10 years from now, a rec director is going to stand before council and ask for other improvements. If, if you, if you accept the fact and adopt the philosophy, we want to have a municipal pool, you're going to have to make investments. There's no two ways about it. And I think this is a good investment. And as far as the cost goes, look, I, I don't minimize what I said earlier about market forces. They are what they are. If you bought a house in 2006, you paid a hell of a lot more than you pay today. That's market forces, that's life. We're dealing with it. But, in response to the one question, when it comes in higher, you got to rethink that you want to go ahead. The administration did. When the bids came in, we looked at this, and we said, no, we do want to go ahead. And if you look at the grant, and factor in the $20,000 donation from the Colgate Fund, we're actually spending less, even with the higher bids, than we originally allocated. So, so we're still doing pretty good financially when you factor in the grant and, and the donation. We're still less than we first thought, even though the, the bids were higher than we thought. So, I understand and appreciate the difficult choice the council has tonight. I don't know that we can answer all these questions. I, I look at some of the questions that were raised by the public as kind of similar to all the issues in our town. We all wish we had acres and acres to build fields and build, you know, great facilities. I wish our pool was two more acres. It's not, but I do think we've, we've used the, the square footage we have responsibly. And a pool by nature is, is dangerous, but I think we've mitigated that with the layout, and, and I think the staff as well has, has always been responsible in treating our youngsters who use that. So, though none of us can stand here and guarantee no one's going to get hurt, I think we've done a pretty good job of using the space we have responsibly, and will accommodate the kids. So, again, we, we appreciate the council's consideration. I think sometimes, other than just nickels and dimes, these are more philosophical questions. If we want to support a pool, you got to support a pool, and sometimes it means that. If you don't want to support a pool, that's fine, too. The council has within their authority to shut down the pool if we find it gets to the point where it's too expensive. But I don't think in all the years I'm in government, the pool has ever covered its cost. You hope to recoup as much as you can, but it's never going to cover itself. You just hope you get as much money back as you can when you accept the philosophy you want to have a nice pool. And if you're going to have a nice pool, you got to make improvements. So, some of the questions, they're all valid, even members of the council had, there's not always good answers to them. You can't answer them. It's hard to see into tomorrow or into next year, certainly what the summer, what the summer's going to hold. But we've analyzed this as the, members of the public and the council asked us to. We're still committed... still committed to the project, because when you look at the funding, our actual allocation is going to be less out of pocket because of the grant and the donation than it was when we first came to the council. I just ask that maybe Bill and Lenny answer some of the more technical questions that were raised by the public, I don't have the answers to them.
Can somebody feed us the questions better one by one? Would you write it down? There's so many of them.
Some of it had to do with space and square footage, Lenny, maybe you could talk about that.
One of the questions was the length. With the deck and on the side, this is almost 100 feet from end to end, which is, although I don't know the dimensions of this room, but this room is not a 100 feet, so it's going to be older than this room's. There was also a certain amount of wall that did the, next to this, I think that wall is going to be adjusted and built once we know exactly where the ready to pull is. If it is 18 inches higher, and you're really just moving a slight step, we'll put some type of rail on the wall. So, well, I don't even know if we have one for it, or if it's next to sidewalk, so we'll put some type of barrier there to prevent somebody from going from the sidewalk. We don't have an open door to that wall.
Thank you, Len.
The other thing I just wanted to mention real quick about that, one question was raised, I do remember, about people sitting in a particular area and looking. When we took the hedges out at the top of the pool, if you recall, if you recall looking at this diagram right here, at one point up in here, there were hedges and some plantings and stuff, which obscured the view over to the two foot, which is over here, because kids sometimes would go back and forth between the waiting pool and the two foot. That's all been removed. So even if we do have tables here, which is what we're suggesting, the ones over here would now be moved to here, you're going to have, you have straight line of sight, which is an improvement that we made last year. So you can definitely see across the span. Does anybody have any other questions?
Well, I do. Mayor, I appreciate your comment about that there really is, you know, it's not really for increased membership, though I would hope that would happen. I feel somewhat responsible, because I was on the boardwalk in Asbury Park when I took the picture of their splash park and sent it to the director and said, how come we don't have this? So that was a few years back when we started this discussion. And you can't guarantee increased revenue, but can you talk about your plans on, I own a preschool, so I have parents that don't know anything about the park, because they're new to, about the pool. They're new to town, they need to be educated, I feed them information, send them email, subscribe to the website. Do you have a campaign in place that you will advertise?
You know, clearly, we're going to, you know, it's going to be all over our rec newsletter when we're releasing it to the media in different ways. We're also planning right now for May 15th to have the pool open.
Okay.
No, we're not going to let people swim that day or anything like that, but we are going to have it open. We're going to have registration tables for swim lessons, for the swim team, and we'll have representatives from some other programs there as well, to try to bring as many people in that night, just to take a look at it. And hopefully, they'll see the new spray pad, and it'll be like, wow. Because those are the very people that we would want to join the pool, the ones that are coming to register their children for a variety of summer programs, camps, and such.
It reminds me of what you had years back at Roosevelt Middle School, it was an open house to register for the summer park program.
Right.
But instead of having it at the school, now you have it right at...
Right.
At the pool, for people to see.
Help marketing, right.
Right. Okay, that's one. I have another question about this survey that you sent out. Nice, excellent responses, many excellent responses, and good. The ones that are not, was there any place on this survey for comments that something that there is way to improve, why someone might say that we have one pool? Was there any place on there, or did anyone submit any comments of why they felt...
My understanding is there were some comments, some hand, was the space provided for that?
Okay.
And, you know, that's something we go over piece by piece, you know. Some of the stuff is...
Right?
Not for publication.
Well, okay. But I meant just something that you can act upon, and you can improve it if it is a concrete suggestion or recommendation.
Anything else?
Anything else?
Well, there was a question about the grant application.
Yes. And the timing of it.
Yeah, when the grant was applied for, this project was just out of bid, it did not have those bid results in until several weeks after the...
Okay. Right, and as the mayor says, it brings it in at 77,000.
At 77, unless you go along with our request for actually rebuilding the whole waiting pool. Again, that's not presented before tonight, but since the contractor is willing to lower the price, it is something I would like you to consider. That does take the project cost from 227 up to 257. Can it be done without it? Absolutely. If I prefer to do it with it, yes, but I wouldn't have wanted to do it at a price of 40,000.
The issue, too, is when you start integrating old with new, you're talking about taking old pipes and connecting the new pipes and all that kind of stuff. And we're talking about $30,000. So what I can suggest to you as a compromise to that, is that raise it by $15,000, and I will get another $15,000 donation from the Colgate Fund. That seems like a pretty good deal.
Well, now I'm just confused, then. Why doesn't this resolution reflect that?
Right. Because...
And I don't mean the Colgate Fund, I meant just the additional...
Our meeting this morning with the contractor, as Lenny indicated, that was a bid alternate that came in at 40,000. And we didn't feel, we were willing to take the risk of joining old to new for 40,000. When the contractor came in this morning and discussed it with us, what he said was, and correct me if I'm wrong, because Lenny's better at this stuff than I am, but he said, when you start joining old to new, you know, it doesn't make sense, you know, it's like you're putting, you're buying a brand-new car and you're putting a second-hand muffler on it, you know?
All right, let me ask you this...
Why not start it from scratch? But we weren't ready to do it for 40, but then he got back to us later in the day and said, all right, look, I'll do it for 30. So he knocked 10,000 off. So now, if we can commit another 15,000 to it, I think it's worth giving a second shake to it.
But how do we vote on that? That's not what's before us tonight.
I don't think that's an issue.
You can amend the resolution.
Very easy.
So, Bill, like, to the point that you just made, and in here it says that the pool will be 50 years old, have there been improvements along the way to...
Tons.
Oh, well, I meant as far as the old to the new, I meant as far as the old to the new.
Oh, you mean, have we, yes. We've ripped the ground up on numerous occasions and replaced old pool joints that were leaking at the seams. We still have a couple that we can't even find. And this stuff's 50 years old, you know? So it's kind of, we're taking a little bit of a risk, and $15,000, I think it's smart to eliminate that risk. Yeah.
Counsel. What's the dimensions of the waiting pool?
Right now?
Yeah.
It's a 20-foot circle. Or 20-foot radius circle, and then it's got this small area.
So that entire thing would be replaced, 20 feet?
Right. What we would be doing, what we were originally doing, Councilwoman, is we were cutting right here and running it into it. Now we'll just, we'll just do the whole thing.
But I had asked that.
I can't see that.
I had asked that, my first question, did they have to do that?
So you're basically doing maybe half or so, and now you want to do it all?
We'd be adding this half of it new, rather than integrating old. Kind of like where that dotted line is.
$30,000 more. And that's all plaster.
Gunite, gunite, and then plaster.
It's not really a lot of money, because to put a, if you put a built-in gunite pool in your backyard...
Yeah, I know.
It's going to cost a lot more money than that, if you put like a 16 by 32 or...
Yeah. Well, I was hoping the mayor was going to make me fire chief, too, and then I was going to get one of them in my backyard. Here we go.
Let's go back to our resolution, though.
Again, we're asking you to consider it at this price, I would recommend it, but again, we're not here to project out.
Right, but it sounds like the resolution was submitted prior to you having this conversation.
Right, but I indicated in my letter, my preferred way to do it would not add 40,000.
And now it's 30, and now to 30 is 15, so...
Actually, you can't really amend the resolution. You'd have to do a change order, which we could come back at the next meeting, because this was not a big... So to the extent that, you know, if council wants, and I think it would be good, if council wants to give their leaning towards it, that will help from an operational point of view over the next two weeks of how to approach it. But I think from a technical point of view, what you need to do is adopt the resolution that you have this evening, and then we would come back at your next meeting with the technical change order.
Okay.
Counselman, yes.
What about the legalities around the competitive bid that we did?
That's what he's saying.
That's why, that's why.
I understand that, but...
In other words, we would award the bid without the alternate, okay? And to the extent that you want to come back with a change order, you know, negotiate the change order with it. It's at a lower price, so there's not really, I don't really think that there's a competitive issue with that, because it would not, for instance, if you awarded it at, if you did award it, it wouldn't be at a price that another bidder would have, it would conflict with another bidder, I guess.
Well, that's what I was going to ask about, because it sounds like we're changing the specifications of the project...
It's a spec within the project.
From what everybody was, from what everybody bid on.
It's, but...
No, they all bid on it.
It's, they all bid it, they bid it on, and it's a down, to the extent it's a cost, it's a downward cost, and it wouldn't, if you look at the bids, it wouldn't have impacted the bids. So I don't think there's an issue, and I think if you do a change order, that you, you know, we could couch it as a change order, I think. I mean, we have to go look at that, obviously, to be sure, and run that by council, but I think, I think that can be done.
Yeah, because I would say, if you went to the other bidders and you said, this guy's now is going to come down, you know, 30,000 or 40,000, would you come down more?
They're not coming down, it's in addition.
No, he's negotiating with the other bidders.
Well, the base bid is going to be awarded as bid. The question is whether or not we can, whether or not we can do, you know, a change order for that, and that's something we'll talk with council about. But certainly, you cannot amend it tonight, and, you know, that can't, if, but I do think that council, if it can, can at least advise, they're leaning towards it, if we're able to do it, whether or not we, if council is in favor of going in that direction, then, you know, if council's not, then we're not even going to proceed it. But if the council is in favor of moving in that direction, then we'll do our due diligence, and then from a day-to-day manager point of view, our staff can, you know, approach it in that way, so...
Okay, then, we'll find out, because I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 63-14 to award this contract to Cypress Cove. Is there a second?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay. Resolution passes forward.
And it's just as, just as a, you know, if council could just talk a little bit about its feelings about moving forward with a potential change order, whether you're inclined to be in favor of that, I think that's important, that we know that at this point in time.
I would say yes.
Take a poll, will you?
Okay.
Well, I, Council President, I mean, it's a matter of whether it's the legality of it.
Clearly, we'd have to clear the...
Does it meet the threshold of...
But he wants to know before they do it.
That would have to be anyway. The question is, though, is whether or not, if for $15,000 of township money additional, are you inclined to say, yeah, let's do that?
We can safely say that they didn't get the contract based on that price, the alternate bid, too, which is going to be considered later. We can say that, so we're fine. Now, the second stage, the change order component, yeah, you know what, maybe it's a budgetary issue, because of the budgetary matter, we're going to consider a change order, perhaps. We came across an offer that we're interested in, so maybe along those lines, if that's the case.
I'd rather not get into that kind of detail tonight, Dick. Obviously, we, if we're going to present you with a resolution, we have to make sure that we can do what we're, that you can do what we're asking you to do, clearly. The question is, if we can, are you inclined to go in that direction?
That's what he's asking. I make a motion to adjourn. Thank you, gentlemen.
So are you inclined?
Yeah, nobody answered what Mr. Gross asked us.
Right, they need to straw poll to...
We need to know whether you want us to pursue this or not.
I suggest.
I say yes.
Counselman Kokovia?
No, I don't want to put more money into this, I don't think it's a good use of our money, and I don't want to put any more money in.
Counselman Cirillo?
We're taking a voice vote on should they move forward.
Do we have to put this in record?
Well, they need to, well...